Do we have, okay, we have everybody. Well, enough. So I'd like to call to order the regular session of the Flugerville City Council at 7:04. If you will please stand for the pledge and a moment of silence, I would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. Our first item is public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by the city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by city council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. Okay, I have Lee Hill. You'll take the podium, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Over the last few weeks, a traffic signal has been installed at 10th and Wells Branch. This could have been done much better, and I do believe there's a problem with it. The signal when it first was lit up was red in four directions. The problem was that had not been a four-way stop. The primary arterial should have been a amber light, allowing the traffic to flow. But be aware now, there's a signal. That was not the case, and y'all were trying to get ahold of your engineers, whoever was responsible to fix this. And since then, four, five, six different times, it has gone back to flashing red. This creates a four-way stop on Wells Branch. For my neighborhood, which is just beyond that, that creates a trickle of traffic, not packets of traffic. Do you know how hard it is to make a right turn with a trickle? A left turn is impossible, so it does impact my neighbors. But I do understand we did need the light at 10th Street, but it could have been implemented much better. You're building another one further down at the new neighborhood on Wells Branch? Let's see if we can do that one well. This last one was not done well. And one of your residents I work with asked me to let you know that over at Falcon Ridge and Lone Star Ranch, there's a stop sign. Most of the people going north and turning left are just blowing through the intersection. Not most of them, 30% are blowing through the intersection. And we've got schoolchildren there in the morning and the afternoon in the 3 o'clock hour. He'd like y'all to let your management know that he'd like to see some enforcement out there. Thank you for your time. Good to see you all.
Thank you very much, sir. Michelle Asavero.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for listening to me for just a moment. I live on Panther Drive, and I've been to the last couple of meetings. And I have some great concerns about the row lane extension. Actually, when I saw what the engineers had designed, I thought, man, I'd like to live over there. It looks pretty cool. And the row lane that they show in the last two meetings was to run behind my property, run the west side of all the residents that live on the property. We had a developer, so my request is that we get a sound barrier for that. But secondly, we've had the developer contact us last week and provide us with information that goes against what the engineer is showing. It's showing that row lane is going to come down Panther Drive, go through four properties, cut through the front of one, the side of another, right up to her front porch, probably will knock my house out, and then take property off the guy next to me. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Maybe that's how this works. I have no idea. I've come to the meetings trying to figure all this stuff out. I'm not even sure this is the right time for me to bring this up about a sound barrier, but I'm sure you'll let me know when I should do it, if this isn't right. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Buck Hendricks. Mr. Hendricks. Haven't seen you in a while.
Thank you, or let me visit just a minute. I live actually next door to Michelle, and I kind of found out what was going on on this new development last week. I think it was Friday, dropped by to visit and let us know what's going on. First thing I see is cutting most of my, a good chunk of my property on Panther Drive out in front of the house. I mean, I've been there like Michelle 40 years, and we're not planning on going anywhere. That's our home. We love it here in Flugerville, and we're not planning on moving. And then he said, well, we can go around back of the property, which is what we had seen originally, but it wasn't taking any of my property. And that's that 81 acres back there, and I've seen several sketches where actually it takes everybody's property, and I just don't know what the process is or where they're at. He had left the message that he was thinking about other things besides down row lane and would let us know, and said they had canceled their meeting here, and then I find out this is going on tonight, so I buzzed up here. But, you know, we need to know what's going on. I mean, if they go back behind my property, I have the same sound concerns everybody else does, and it's, I'm understanding it's a four-lane road, which is going to be a major road, and it's not a two-lane road, and they're planning on building a 10-story tower. I mean, you know, this is what I hear last week. So I need to kind of know what's going on. And I don't want to, I'm not going to give up any of my property, but I want to see what's going on back there because I got, like I say, same sound concerns and traffic and everything else, and that's kind of where we've been planning forever and don't plan on going. So I don't know how they're going to get information out to us, but, you know, I want to get some.
So we'll have somebody communicate with you.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Ken Marchand.
Hello. I have some concerns about the Chisholm Trail PUD. I have spoken with Ethan Harwell with Kim Lee Horn about the continuation of Maple Vista Drive and this development. The street is narrow with parking on both sides. There are nine commercial businesses, and at times it is blocked with vehicles unwilling to free. A new housing development that is currently under construction on Cream Lane would also increase traffic flow. Maple Vista cannot be considered as a thoroughfare, which would only have one way in and out of that future development. Current gridlock traffic at 685 Wilkie and Kelly Lane intersection desperately needs to be addressed. I believe the city should provide proper infrastructure before approving any further development in this area. I live in the Shallow Creek subdivision along the field just west of the planned development. I've witnessed significant flooding in the area which would become the park. After a nine-inch rainfall overnight, there was approximately 20 to 25 feet of water flowing through the current stream. Southbound 685 is closed due to water flowing across. According to the developer, the pond in their drawing is actually not a pond, but a stormwater retention area. I truly believe that it will not be sufficient to prevent future flooding. City recently reached an agreement with the L.C.R.A. to purchase additional water for the city's future needs. This river may not be able to yield much more. I believe the Greenbelt and Pond areas in the planned PUD would be a great location for a reservoir to secure future water for the city. Federal and state grant money may pay the entire cost of this product, project. I encourage you to consider this. This property and adjacent acreage is home to several species of wildlife, fox, bobcat, lynx, coyote, several species of raptors, owls, hawks, caracaras, and golden eagles, which are federally protected. There are also many migratory birds. My question to Kim Lee Horn is, have you contacted the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for a habitat assessment? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else wishing to speak under public comment? Okay. All right, moving on, consent agenda, council items you wishing to pull. I'd like to pull four Alpha, four A, and four V, as in Victor.
Four H. Four J, no, not four H, four J. Four M. Four P.
Is that M as in Mary?
M as in Mary. Four Q. Four U.
Did you say PQNU?
PQNU.
Can you do your list again, sir? H, J.
H, J.
Not H, you said.
Not H.
Not H.
Not H. J.
J.
LM. PQ.
L. M.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I, I've got.
Q, what else did you have? Is that it?
Q, U. And what's worse about this is that I'm the only one, I'm assuming, who has to have a flight at 5:30 in the morning, but like some of these items, I'm like, what are they doing on consent?
I got, I got a few as well, so I think you already pulled Alpha, is that right?
Yes, right.
Baker, Charlie.
Wait a minute. I'm going to get caught back up again.
Sierra, and W. I don't have a word for W.
Watermelon.
So Doug. Baker, Charlie, Sierra, and W?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else wishing?
I think.
Are there any left?
I think everyone's already pulled mine. I was going to pull Victor and whatever W was.
Yeah.
Whiskey.
Whiskey. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, I was very surprised to see B on there. Like, are you kidding me?
All right. Anything else?
Oh, my goodness.
Trista, you may read what's left.
I am going to review what was pulled, so that we can make sure I got the correct list. I have items for A, B, C, J, L, M, P, Q, S, U, V, and W.
Oh, S was pulled?
Who pulled S? Excellent.
Mr. Weiss.
Mayor, Mayor Proton.
Okay.
Doug, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Is that it? All right.
Give me just one second here.
Let me read the last two items on the consent.
And I will review them one more time at the end of this to confirm. On the consent agenda is item 4D, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading, an ordinance regarding the city of Flugerville, Texas, municipal retirement system benefits, adopting non-retroactive repealing colas for retire rates and their beneficiaries under TMRS Act 853.404F and 4-1, and authorizing annually accruing updated service credits and transfer updated service credits. 4E, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading, an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-02-24 of the city of Flugerville, Texas, as amended, by changing the zoning designation of approximately 81 acres of unplanted land situated in the Peter Conrad Survey number 71 at track number 200 in Travis County, Texas, from urban and urban center to planned unit development district, to be known as the Chisholm Station Planned Unit Development, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing effective date. As a reminder, items 4A, 4B, 4C, 4J, 4L, 4M, 4P, 4Q, 4S, 4U, 4V, and 4W have been pulled. All remaining items may be acted upon in a single motion.
So move. Second. Have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Okay, motion carried, thank you. We will return to those items after the next two items on the regular agenda. The next item is 5A, discuss and center action to approve a construction contract with PLW Waterworks in the amount of $35,492,185 for construction services associated with the Willbarger Creek Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Richard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to, first off, like to thank you all for letting me present for this item. This is a long time coming for this project. It has been a three-year design project and a very exciting time for everybody, including the, everybody here, because it's a big step in the future of the city's wastewater infrastructure. So we're really excited to move this forward to be able to serve a significant portion of the city's wastewater CCM. And with that, we'll kick it off with what we're going to be talking about this evening, which is the GMP Package 1. So just a quick recap of the Willbarger Creek Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility. I realize that is a mouthful. It is a 6 million gallon per, 6 million gallon per day wastewater treatment facility. It's 158 acres just off of Greg Lane to the east of 1849 Park, southeast of 1849 Park. It's intended to serve new growth and development along the eastern side of our wastewater CCM that goes all the way out to the 973 corridor. So our intent with this is to remove a significant amount of lift stations that we have, as we've talked about previously on previous council agendas. We have a lot of lift stations that are very high risk for the city and are at the edge of their capacity currently. So this site is master plan for the full expansion of the facility. So its full buildout is 24 million gallons per day to serve the city at almost full buildout until we reach a new Sweden wastewater treatment facility at some very long future date. And a quick recap of the construction manager at risk delivery method. So this, so we, the CMAR is the construction manager at risk, who is Pepper Lawson Waterworks for this project. They develop work packages. So there are GMPs, which is guaranteed maximum price, is what the whole package is, but then they are divided into early work packages or balance of plant packages. There's a lot of acronyms. Please interrupt me if I say them too quickly, because there's a lot, but I will do my best. So these are developed into guaranteed maximum, maximum price packages. The one today is GMP 1. So the advantage of this, it does provide for an earlier construction. It allows us to complete that funding process. So this is a very expensive project. It is the most expensive water and wastewater CIP project that we have in total, so we can allow our funding to be staged appropriately throughout each one of these GMP packages. So just a quick recap of the timeline of this CMAR. So as I mentioned, it's been a three-year design project. We just started the design on this. It was awarded in November of 2020. It's a greenfield facility, so we have a lot of design considerations that go into it, so you have to design it literally from the ground up. So a very long design period to be able to design this facility. We then go out to an RFP for a C, for a CMAR, and then we start this pre-construction phase that we talked about earlier on this calendar year, I believe, March 2023. So we enter this pre-construction phase to try to find optimization processes throughout the facility, how the CMAR can maybe bring the cost down, and also what we can find for our final guaranteed maximum price for the balance of plan. So that arrow, the we are here arrow, is where we're at today. This is the GMP 1 package. The GMP 1 package is what we'll, the next slide will go into detail what's in it. And then further on, in March, if this package is approved this evening, we will come forward again with a GMP 2, which is the balance of plant, which is the remainder of the project. So that will be a second package for the remainder of the project, which then goes into the full project, project schedule. What we noticed here, what we note here at the bottom is the funding mechanism for this. So we are, all we have to do is secure the TWD funding, close the TWDB loan. The TWDB funding has significant cost savings. I know we've talked about TWDB and WIFIA funding and how we get the cost savings from that. We've estimated some savings, at least on the Texas Water Development Board, that'll save us roughly about $30 million over the life of the loan. So we're obviously very excited about it. There's a lot of hurdles we have to jump over for that. We're really excited about being able to secure that funding. And the same goes for WIFIA funding, as, as mentioned in the surface water treatment plant, that was a $13 million savings over the life of the loan. You can extrapolate that out, but we won't know the full savings until we close on this loan.
So I'm going to channel Councilman Mathieu here for a second and ask you to explain to the citizens the state and federal portions of this and how much money you've been able to save by working with our state and federal partners in putting all of this deal together.
Sure. So I will preface this by saying, until the WIFIA loan closes, we don't have that firm number, right? You won't know until you close and you lock in the interest rate. So just fair warning, these are rough numbers. It's not guaranteed. Just need to set that out. So the Texas Water Development Board, like I mentioned, that's the state part of this project. They'll fund up to half of the project, 50% of the project, and then you have to secure it with other funding sources outside of that. That one in itself is saved, is estimated to save us about $30 million over the life of the loan.
$30 million?
$30 million. So, and on the WIFIA side of, just, just this project, right? I'm not talking the entire CIP. The WIFIA piece of it, we're estimating it to be about the same amount, another $30 million over the life of that portion of the loan. So again, it's not final till we close the loan. So it's going to depend on the interest rate at time of closing the loan is what's going to matter, but estimate as of today is about $30 million on each side of it. State on the TWDB, federal on the WIFIA side.
Okay, so our state and federal partners together are saving us about $60 million on this project?
That's correct.
That $60 million is not coming directly out of the pockets of Flugerville taxpayers?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That is correct, and we are, so that is why you'll see us continue to pursue these funding mechanisms, because it's nothing but advantageous for us. So it's not just, so we have this whole WIFIA, which was at the last meeting that we brought forward an application for the entirety of the CIP, so that way we can take advantage of that savings on the entirety of our water and wastewater CIP as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, so the GMP 1 package, just, so we're all kind of on the same page of what's included in that GMP 1 package. So we have site establishment. So again, this is a greenfield plant. There's nothing on the site. There is a house that's abandoned that is the only thing on the property right now. It's a whole lot of farmland. So we have to do site establishment. So we have a whole lot of site establishment. We have to clear the land, and we have to drill piers. So that is in this package as well. If you have heard us talk about the soils on the east side of Flugerville or all around Flugerville, you know that we have expansive clay soils, which means we have to drill incredibly deep piers. So that's part of this package as well, so site development, land clearing, drill piers for the larger facilities that are going to be done, as well as large equipment, long lead time items, such as pumps, UV systems, electrical switchgear, all of the stuff that are required for a wastewater treatment plant are included in this package, because those have submittal processes that take a very long lead time, and they have to be manufactured as well. So the whole package that's already been negotiated previously, we brought items forward to y'all for switchgear, switchgear pieces, UV equipment, filter equipment. We've brought a lot of smaller packages. That's already included in that $10,276,000. That's already been brought forward to y'all as individual items. And then this package, which is the site establishment, drilled piers, the rest of the equipment, is that $35 million. So we've already authorized $10 million. That is getting transferred over to the CMAR. This package, the 35 is the site establishment and the rest of the equipment required for the facility. So to give an idea of like where we're at, so we're going to come forward, like I mentioned, in March. So we have the GMP 1 that we're talking about this evening, and then we have the balance of plant, which is GMP 2. So the GMP 1 that we were talking about has been competitively bid, but we also have a balance of plant estimate as of today, right? So we still have to go through till March. We still have some work to do with our CMAR to be able to see if we can find various optimizations that may be beneficial to the city to be able to shave some of the costs down. So I want to be very careful in saying, we want to be able to bring the cost down, but we're always in the business of constructing things right, so we want to make sure it's right. So any optimizations we're going to have are not going to be anything that's going to impact the facility and maybe something that's aesthetically, you know, something that we can live without.
And to be fair to this council, years ago, whenever, was it Omar had brought up the conversation about building, building this out to where we were going to, make sure that we, we do as much as we can practically, because given how large our CCM is both for water and wastewater, and we know half our population isn't here yet. So you might as well go ahead and make sure you do it right, right now, as opposed to go ahead and have to do remediation efforts down the line. And in the end, it saves your citizens money.
That's correct.
On that, too.
And that, again, that's why, what I mentioned on before with the master plan of the facility, that's why the design of this took a significantly long period of time. So it did take three years, because we do know that we have this wastewater CCM that we will have to eventually serve. So we need to make sure that the facility we're building today can be expanded on in the future by, if it's, depending on the growth, if it's me or if it's some future Brennan, then they have the ability to do so. So one thing to mention on this, too, so we're evaluating those, but currently, our current estimate for the entirety of the project, right now, full, all-in, is about $243 million. So it is a large amount of money, obviously. Like I mentioned, it is the largest CIP that we have within our water and wastewater system, and it is a monumental project for the city going forward.
So my, my main question to you, I mean, this is a huge chunk of change here, $35.5 million for this portion of the project. Has the, the amount that we're awarding tonight, the amount that this bid came in at, what, has it impacted the anticipated total cost of the project? Is it, is it in alignment with what is currently on the CIP? Or did we get this bid and say, oh, goodness, we're, we need to size this up 10%, 20%?
This one was close. I couldn't give that exact number. We're, we're very close, within, not a margin there.
The engineers estimated probable cost.
And we're using the, we're at the point of pre-engineering where we're using like this, the construction manager at risk, kind of what their opinion was on when they were going to bid it. So, but we're close to what their, relatively close to what their bid was.
When you say relatively close, 2%, 10%?
We're within, do you remember?
Within, within 3.
3, within 3, 3%.
You built in 3?
No, we were within 3% of our estimate.
All right. Thank you.
One other thing, this question came from the first slide. You talked about lift station consolidation and the risk of not doing lift, lift station consolidation, and the benefit of doing lift station consolidation. Can you explain that for us?
I absolutely can. I love talking about lift stations, so. So we have, like I mentioned, we have a significant amount of lift stations, wastewater lift stations. So think of a lift station as everything doesn't flow by gravity. We would love it if wastewater always flowed by gravity, but the terrain doesn't always allow us to do that. We have wastewater lift stations all over the city, especially on the east side of SH 130, where we pump wastewater over the hill to get to the central wastewater treatment plant on Sunlight Highway. So the problem with lift stations is you could, people flush things they shouldn't flush, is the, is the easiest way to put that. So, and these pumps don't always push that, that's, that stuff through. So then you could have a clog pump, things don't go through, and then you also, it can be in the middle of the night, it's never convenient, or you could be out in the middle of the rain trying to pull a pump. It is not convenient, and you're risking a sanitary sewer overflow. So when you have a sanitary sewer overflow, it goes into the creek, because lift stations are usually at the low point, so they're next to a creek line usually. So then if you do have an overflow, that means you have an environmental impact. You have a fish kill, you have impact to the water, water stream. It's a whole big, whole big deal, obviously.
You could have TCU fines?
You can get TCU fines, you can have Texas Park Wildlife that's coming out to evaluate if you have fish kill. It's a very large deal to have an SSO. And, and wastewater lift stations are very high risk, because you have so many things that can go wrong, right? There's not a lot that can go wrong in a gravity pipeline. It's, gravity's not changing, so it's all going to go down the pipe. But when you have a pump station, you have pumps, electrical gear, generators, you have things that people shouldn't flush, you have grease issues, it's just astronomical amount of variables that are very hard to control, and that can leave the city in a very vulnerable state when it comes to SSOs or any kind of issues with environmental damage.
And, and how much lift station consolidation will all of this result in?
So there's a whole program for the Willbarger Basin, so there's two, three interceptors and the Willbarger Treatment Plant. So we have a Kelly Lane Interceptor, Surrano Interceptor, and the Willbarger Interceptor that takes off, don't quote me, I think it's seven, seven total lift stations, one of them being our most critical, which is the Weiss Lane Lift Station, which is right on Weiss Lane, just near Hidden Lake Crossing, which is a massive lift station, about 70 feet deep. That's incredibly scary. But, but yeah, but it takes off about.
But it was built there for a reason once a certain entity decided to build a school over there.
Correct. And we have, it has been in place since about '04, '05-ish, and it is, we've kept adding capa, bumping up capacity on it, and it's a very big risk for the city. And then we have other wastewater lift stations that go all the way from up on Kelly, near Verona, on the right-hand side, on the east side, all the way across to Kennamer Lane. It will take all of the lift stations all along that whole thoroughfare offline. The whole program will, which then will only be left with one lift. The whole program will, which then will only be left with one lift station on the entirety over there near Carmel. That's a flex point for us at some future date.
Is is there a plan to to get rid of the Carmel Lift Station or is that a permanent feature?
So to get into the like strategic mindset here, Carmel Lift Station, just so y'all know, is a tipping point. So we can either pivot flow from Carmel to the central wastewater treatment plant or to allow to gravity flow to the new Willbarger wastewater treatment plant. The benefit there is we can shift flow when we need to do either maintenance or we need to actually expand capacity at one of the two plants. So then we can pivot the flow one way or the other, which gives us a little bit of aid when we start doing construction sequencing for a future plant expansion. So it'll stay for a while, but it'll kind of be as a use as a flex point, so that way we can have a bigger window for construction in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So with with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, of course, we're we're like I mentioned, we're very excited about this, it's been a long time coming. There's been a lot of blood, sweat and tears into this project, and I've got a whole project team behind me that can tell you all about how much I probably drive them a little bit mad. But we're very excited about this and I'd love to answer any questions you have, or we can, I can talk to y'all about wastewater all night, so.
Counsel, any other question?
I will move approval of awarding the construction contract under five A.
Have a motion in a second to approve item five A.
This is how we keep clean water, people, flush your toilets.
Motion carried, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
Our next item is discussing consider action to appropriate ARPA funds for the food fairness program. And let me just add a little preface here. A month or so ago, I forgot how long ago, Max and John Amador were present and I presented a proclamation. As this was a project that they initiated. In light of the fact that they were finding and experiencing some of their classmates or other students that could not afford to pay for their lunches. I'm going to let Cory Amador come forward and do a presentation, I know we'll have some questions, but. Let's get a little bit of a background on the program.
As I said, my name is Cory Amador, thank you counsel for having me and letting me speak to you today. Food fairness in Flugerville schools, as the mayor said, was an is a nonprofit that my son started. In April of last year. When Flugerville I S D put out the notice that they were going to reinstate their pre covid policy of. Giving the students alternative lunches if their account balances were in the negative. As soon as my kids heard about that, they immediately started the process of starting a nonprofit. And so they put in the paperwork with my help and it took about two months because apparently it's very hard for minors to run a nonprofit. But with with me as an adult, they were able to get approval and five oh one C three status. By July, we were fundraising, so just to give you kind of a background on that, but they we are a student led five oh one C three. Created to ensure every student has access to the same hot meal regardless of their family's financial status. As I said, we are student led, our president is John Amador, he's a junior at Hendrickson High School. Our vice president is Max Amador, a freshman at Hendrickson High School. They have just recently recruited Natalie Vargas, who is unable to attend, but she is our secretary. And as for our adult advocates, there's myself, Cory Amador, who I am the treasurer and the executive director, and I do everything that concerns legal paperwork. We also just recently recruited Denise Dearing, who wanted me to say personally. That she thanks you for giving us this opportunity and is sincere regret that she was unable to attend. So she is a pillar of the community and we are very pleased to have her on the board. Our motto, no child should be forced to choose between hunger and humiliation, and that is exactly what's happening. The kids will choose their meal, they'll go up to pay for it, and as soon as the cashier sees that they have no funds in their account. That meal is taken from them, thrown into the trash and they are handed a cold cheese sandwich in front of their peers. It is humiliating, their elementary kids end up in tears, they get made fun of. It's financial, it's broadcasting the children's financial. Information to the entire school. It is just an awful practice that we would like to see come to an end, and if it can't, then we want to prevent it from happening.
Can I ask you about that Cory, when I when I heard about that myself, I was pretty astounded, like I I knew that the the substitute lunch, you know, cheese sandwich, everything else in there. But the actual throwing away of the food officially in front of people, have you spoken to the school board about that, is there a what's the rationale behind that practice?
I have, I have spoken to, I've had a couple of meetings with district and the administration office. And the rationale and with Aramark to figure out why this is happening and the rationale behind that. Is because if a student is given a cheese sandwich, Aramark absorbs the cost of the two meals. They absorb the cost of the hot lunch that was thrown away and they absorb the cost of the cheese sandwich. But if they just decide to give the hot lunch to the student instead of throwing it away and replacing it with a cheese sandwich. Then the district is the one that would absorb that cost, and that is why it's done.
So you're saying the district doesn't want to absorb that cost?
I'm saying that they're telling me that they can't afford to absorb that cost.
Well. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's fine, thank you. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a timeline, like I said, I already said a lot of this, but in April, they announced the policy. We applied for a certificate of formation almost immediately as soon as we heard about it. By the end of June, I think I said July, we started actively fundraising. In August of twenty twenty three, we had paid all outstanding free and reduced lunch balances for the every family, for every school in the district. We did that because we heard that they were being sent to collections and we didn't want that to happen, so. We were able to pay that off, we were not able to pay off for the entire hundred and eighty thousand dollar debt, but we were at least able to help. The free and reduced kids and before you ask, because it's normally a question. The free lunch kids had balances because the applications for free lunch are not due until October. And so if they qualified the year before, they are grandfathered in. And then if in October they find out they're no longer qualified, then they are backcharged for all of the lunches that they had up until that point. So that is why a lot of the free lunch kids had balances. So right now, we are continuing our fundraising efforts and identifying those most in need. We currently have about eleven thousand dollars in the bank right now, but we just got noticed that we got a five thousand dollar grant from Waterburger. We've had some businesses reach out to us wanting to help us as well, so things are looking like they will improve. Flugerville Independent School District currently has thirty four campuses, serves over twenty five thousand students. And thirty four percent of those students are considered economically disadvantaged. As of October fifth, these were the unpaid lunch balances that I received from the district. On reduced price lunch, twelve hundred, full price lunch, twelve thousand and a total of thirteen thousand six hundred. Across one thousand eight hundred and sixty two student accounts, that was the number that was in the negatives as of October fifth, it was six weeks into school.
And this is information the school district.
This is school district gave me that took me three weeks to get.
The balance of the free or reduced lunch, well, obviously they're free, but. Is in the category of twelve hundred and forty nine, so the full price lunch would be those students who maybe were not in the economically disadvantaged category. But still couldn't afford to pay for lunch.
They may be economically disadvantaged, but not according to federal standards.
Because those standards are so strict regarding.
Well, and the other thing is those standards are established on a national year benchmark.
You're gonna you're gonna talk about my next slide. Speaking of, these are the maximum income guidelines determined by the USDA based on a federal poverty level. By the number of people in your household, what the maximum amount you can make in the household to qualify for free or reduced lunch. As you can see, those numbers are ridiculously low. To make it easier and a little bit more applicable, I chose a family of four, thinking that most people would be able to relate to that in their minds. So for a family of four, if you make more than thirty nine thousand dollars a year as a household. You cannot qualify for free lunch. If you make more than fifty five thousand five hundred, this is pre tax, this is gross. You do not qualify for reduced lunch on a monthly basis. Those numbers are pretty sad, thirty two hundred and forty six hundred.
Can I just say that these are actually the guidelines that are required to qualify for SNAP benefits, Medicaid? These are those same numbers, when you fill out the application for free or reduced lunch. You can kind of skip all the rest of it if you can give them a case number for SNAP or Medicaid, so these are those specific numbers.
I was I was always surprised when I worked at Health and Human Services that when you saw the threshold. Because realistically speaking, we know, you know, people would struggle to live on that, we just for for information purposes, we just had a slide from P C D C. That showed that the average household income for Flugerville is one hundred and twenty six thousand dollars right there as well. So where are those pockets, where are those growth, what are we looking at, the people who are being left behind because of what we're doing regarding these things? And we're punishing them even more, you know, in their ability to do so, which is very. I'm not trying to cast aspersions, I know the school district has reasons for what they do, but like this is this is very unnerving that we even have to have this conversation.
It's heartbreaking, for sure. One of the things that I thought was most surprising when I did my research is that these levels do not account for location. Cost of living plays no role in this, they are across the board, no matter where you live in the United States, these are the numbers. It doesn't matter if you live in Hollywood, California or Sweetwater, Texas. I don't know if you know, but in Sweetwater, Texas, if you make forty six hundred dollars a month, you're living like a queen. So but in Flugerville, not so much.
I have family in Sweetwater, Texas.
I do as well. So lots of family in Sweetwater, Texas. So it doesn't account for location, and I think that's one of the problems, and unfortunately, that's on a federal level. It does not account for family dynamics, you can be a single parent with two kids in diapers and daycare and one in school. And be treated the same and have the same income guidelines as a two parent household with two teenagers that work. And that's not right. The cost of living estimate in Flugerville is sixty four thousand dollars annually or fifty three forty three per month for a family of four. This is a low ball number, it is to live comfortably with no excess. And as you can see, it far exceeds what the qualifications would be to get help for food in school. Approximately ninety percent of the twenty twenty two twenty three debt was accumulated by students who did not qualify. And this is why, they didn't qualify because it's too hard to qualify. Food fairness was created too and is actively working towards closing this gap. Between the parents or the families that can afford school lunch easily. And the families that are on free and reduced, there is a significant portion of the population that is in that middle ground. Where they may make enough to do alright, but they certainly can't afford the three fifteen a day. To feed their child at school or maybe not even enough to buy groceries so that they can have a taken lunch to school. And so we are trying to close the gap and help those children. We are in contact with the P T O parent liaisons who specifically work with at risk families in the district. Campus counselors and district social workers to identify and then support these children in need. The flyer that you see to the right is the one that I have handed out to these specific people that they can give to the parents. That they can give to the children so that those kids can come to me. I've tried to work with the district, but there are problems with privacy anonymity and I've understood that and I've told them. I don't need to know names, I don't need to know student I Ds. You call me, you tell me I have three children, they owe this much and they can't pay for the rest of the year, I will hand you a check and let you fill in the student I D. I have no problem with that and that is why we're here and what my kids made this nonprofit for.
And Ms. Amador, on the relating to the social workers, is there a social worker per campus? I know the I there was one social worker at the administration building at one time, there may be more now, I don't know.
There's so there's a head social worker that oversees all of the social workers on throughout the district. There are campuses that share social workers. I know that some of the high schools, I think, I think probably all of the high schools each have their own, but I know at the elementary level, I think they have some that share. I'm not sure exactly how many social workers there are on campuses, you know, throughout or who shares, but I do know that we.
And so you've maintained or developed a relationship with them specifically or?
I tried to, I'm trying to say this in a nice way, I tried to go to the district and talk to the head social worker and say, look, we have this many campuses. This is what we're trying to do, will if I gave you the information, can you give it to all of your social workers? I don't know if you've ever tried to email anybody in the school district, but their firewall is crazy and I just, my emails just don't go through. So I've asked them to help me at least do that. I was told a lot of things, I was told I'll get you the P T O liaison's emails, I will get you the social workers emails, I will get you all of these things. And I waited and I waited and I waited for about a month and I just decided to circumvent. And that's what I'm doing now, actively on social media, telling these, telling everybody I can. If you see a kid getting a cheese sandwich, tell that kid, go to the counselor, go to the social worker, tell them to contact us and we will help. And so I'm kind of finding a way around the block that they've put up.
Let me ask you about that because that concerns me a little bit, obviously. Is that, I mean, here you are trying to help children who are missing a hot meal and yet we have professionals in the district who are. I'm sure they recognize the need and the necessity for their children to have hot meals. But seemingly aren't quite working with you in a very cooperative way.
I've been told they can't show favoritism to nonprofits and I've been told that. You know, some of them are just very open to my face, oh yes, this is great, we appreciate you so much, we will do this and then I, there's nothing. I think a lot of it, I was told that when my sons did some news interviews that it painted the district in a very bad light. And they got a lot of negative backlash, so.
I would imagine it would have, yeah, okay. Well, I see some some hurdles there, I think that the organization can jump over. I think it's probably going to take a little bit of time and working with the right people.
We're already jumping them, yes. The annual cost for a school lunch, if you are a paid student, it's two ninety a day. To feed a child for an entire school year is five hundred and twenty two dollars. For secondary, six through twelve, it's five hundred and sixty seven dollars to pay for a child's lunch for every day of the school year. If they're on reduced lunch, it's the same no matter where they go, it only takes seventy two dollars to feed a child for an entire year.
And how many, how many days are those?
Hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days.
Yes, sir. Until federal and local policies change, there will always be families who are going to need help and it's got to come from the federal level down. It's federal to address the cost of living issues with the poverty, it's set on the poverty, national poverty li- level. And then it's got to go to the state to address it as well. Food fairness's goal is to support students so that they never have to choose between hunger and humiliation, but we can't do it alone. And so that is our ask, is to ask for some allocation from the ARPA funds to see if we can help these students. Your contribution will provide students with hot nutritious lunches, sparing them the embarrassment and helping to alleviate a financial burden for their families.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the debt will continue to accumulate. We're going to help, if we were able to do this, it would be a one time thing, so. How, I mean, how would this help over a long period of time? Because you just paid off the debt and here we are in October and the debt's already back.
No, we are, and I I probably should have said this and I apologize, we are no longer. No, we are, and I, I probably should have said this and I apologize. Uh, we are no longer paying the debt. We aren't, we aren't doing that anymore. We did in the very beginning. Our goal was to help the kids get off the cheese sandwiches and to give the money back to the district. It was a win-win. But it didn't quite work out the way that we wanted. So the very first check that we presented to Flugerville ISD. That was because we were upholding the promise that we made as when we started the nonprofit. Um, after that check, we told our donors, I put out an email to every single donor that we had. Saying that our goal now is to work on eliminating the cheese sandwiches. We want to, instead of. Going back and just paying the debt. I'm sorry?
Policy advocacy, policy change.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how much we can do as far as changing the policy because it is on a federal level. Or, well, the cheese sandwiches aren't. But what we want to do is go after the kids that really need the help, that are in that gap. Prevent them from getting the cheese sandwiches by paying their lunches, paying for their lunches for the year.
How do you identify them?
Through the social workers and counselors. And so I'll, I'll give you an example. Um. We've, we've gone in the Prevent Opportunity Center, full of at-risk kids. These are the kind of kids that. Are going to need our help. I used to work with at-risk students myself and I, and I know from personal experience. It doesn't always mean that the kid, the parents can't pay for the lunch. So we're trying to identify through the social workers and the counselors what kids really, really need our help. I was actually emailed by the social worker on campus and she asked me if I could help with two of her students. I went and I wrote a check for the balance that they owed and an, another hundred dollars. And what I told her was these two students qualified for reduced lunch last year. So have them put in the applications, cause I am a big opponent of putting in the applications and these two students had not. And so I told them, have them put in the applications. If they're approved, great, they are covered for the year by just what I gave them. If they're not, call me back and we'll assess what, how much more I can help them. This last time I was called in, um, I went in on Friday. I had another call from the principal. Saying that she had seen, she had seen a student. Take the cheese sandwich, take one look at it and throw it away. And she approached the child and said, you know, we have someone that can help with that. No, miss, no, no, it's fine. I don't want you to. Well, have you filled out the application? Can I call your mom? Don't call my mom. It's fine. Don't call my mom. And so she just let it go, respecting the kid's wishes. And then the next day. He went up to her and said, did you mean it? Do you really have someone that will help us? Because I'm really hungry today. And she said, I do. She emailed me and I was there before lunch the same day with a check to help this child. And while I was there, he came out to use the restroom and just was so grateful. And thanked me profusely. And then as I was walking out the door, the social worker came out and said, wait, wait, wait. The kid that you helped last week made me promise that if you were back on campus, that I would let him know because he wants to speak to you. And I'm telling you, this child went on for about ten minutes and nearly had me in tears. I just barely held it together. Guys, you don't know how much this means to me. It's so embarrassing. The cheese sandwich is so nasty. And this, you're making a difference. Tell your sons that they're making a difference. And he went on and on and on about the gratitude. So that is what we are trying to do is. Find those kids that need it. Have them go to their social workers because I can't just have any, any old parent email me and say, hey, pay for my kid. There's gotta be some kind of, some kind of test, I guess. And I'm not going to ask them how much money they make. Because it's none of my business. So I'm having them go to the counselors and I'm having them ask the counselor. And then the counselor or social worker calls me and we make it happen.
So basically you're involved in kind of preventative, preventative interaction versus reactive paying off loans. Uh, which, and to your point, Ms. Holliday, is that, yeah, we'll pay off the loan today, but you know, we're gonna have another debt next year, next month or whatever. Where here you actually know that you're impacting a student and/or students as this program. Expands in terms of its sustainability. And you and I had that conversation uh, as well is that. Obviously, uh, whatever funding, if we approve any funding uh, this afternoon or this evening. Uh, you know, it's a one-time thing and when it's gone, it's gone. Obviously, you're involved in fundraising. Uh, with some success and that's good. Uh, I think uh, that there may be other avenues for the food fairness program that. Uh, may be ongoing that we would need to explore. Uh, I know the ARPA funding, we have a certain amount left. Um, not left, but that was set aside that we didn't utilize. Uh, that certainly, you know, as this council uh, considers could appropriate uh, funds for this. And, and our city attorney has already indicated that uh, it would be something that could be appropriated from ARPA funding. So there's no question about that.
I have one additional question.
Yes, ma'am.
How can we ensure um, equity and that the funds are. Um, shared in a diverse way? Or do you have some sort of accountability, some sort of tracking system for that? To make sure who you're serving and things like that?
I, no, I honestly, I'm, I'm going on the trust of the social workers. I do know that the four students that we have already helped are highly at-risk students. So that's kind of the demographic that we're looking at, um, and trying to help the most. But as far as tracking with, with wanting to allow the kids on anonymity and their privacy. I, I there's, I just can't. I can't ask the school for their names. The only reason I was able to talk to these two individuals is cause they, they sought me out. So there's no way for me to track it without, without access, without violating their rights to privacy.
I had to ask, thank you.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
I do. And I wish I could. I actually asked the question to the district and I asked, you know, is there a way that? I even asked them, can you, can you hire me for a dollar a year? So that I will have access to these numbers. I'll sign an NDA. I'll do whatever I need to do so that I can help the kids that need help. And they, they told me no. So.
Well, well, let me just say, and, and for the benefit of the council, I mean, I asked you to come and, and do this presentation because I was so moved by. Uh, by John and Max and, and what their concerns were and their passion and convictions were to help their, their fellow students. And being a um. A graduate of the Flugerville Independent School District and going through the school back in the days of yore. When lunches were thirty cents.
Right.
And uh, of course, I didn't know I was poor then, so thirty cents didn't seem like a whole lot to me. But uh, most of the times I brought my lunch or went home for lunch. So I had a little bit of a convenience of being able to do that. Um, to my knowledge, we never had free lunches or reduced lunches back then. I'm sure we didn't. Uh, and it was a different time, but you know, as in, we, we're in a society today where things are. Completely different and challenging for families and for students. And um, uh, this, this situation with the, the cheese sandwich really. Impacted me and as, as being part of a community that I've been a part of for a number of years. And you know, I love Flugerville. I would do anything for the, for Flugerville and the school district. And um, uh, so that's why I asked you to do that and, and come forward.
And I, and I do know that, I mean, you're right, fifty thousand dollars is, is not going to last. You know, but it would pay for a hundred kids to have hot lunches for the year. And we have already see, received grants from Walmart and HEB and, you know, some. Some other kind of big name companies are looking at us and we've had businesses reach out to us saying, hey, we'll do a fundraiser here. I actually got a phone call that, from a barber shop that said, hey, come pick up some flyers from me. And when you help a kid with the lunch, if he brings me the flyer, then he can have free haircuts. I won't even have to ask him why. And so I am working with the community to try to set up other ways to help these children and these families with some financial impacts. And so I'm going tomorrow to pick up the flyers and if he sees a food fairness business card stapled to that flyer. He knows not to even ask. The kid sits down, he gets a free haircut. And so we are doing things like that. And like I said, you're absolutely right. The money won't last, but we are hoping to fundraise. And in the meantime, if you had seen this kid's face, a year's worth of lunch that I provided him, that meant something.
I thank you for that. I am a free lunch sort of girl and I was uh, the whole time I was in school. Um, I also am asking that question so that you're, you're soliciting for businesses to help you. But I wanna know if individuals in the room as well who are interested in sowing a seed into what you're doing. Is, are they able to do that as well?
Absolutely. We've had a website set up since the very beginning. Um, we have donations buttons all over our website.
Go ahead, give yourself a shameless plug right now.
Okay. Thank you, right there. My name is Corianne Amador. That is my email address, admin@foodfairness, cause you have to have the Ps. And our website is foodfairness.org. And again, the donation buttons are all over there. And you can set up, even if you set up a ten dollar a month donation, a recurring donation for ten dollars a month. That feeds a child for eight weeks.
Well, Mayor, if I, if I'm allowed, uh, you know, I just wanted to say really quickly uh, uh, to all three of you. Um, I know you don't need me to say it, but I'm so proud of what you're doing. I'm so proud of you. Most people spend their entire lives uh, not really making a difference in their community and you're, you're, you've already done it. I mean, I, I've, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty old, I'm pushing fifty. You know, and, you know, served in the military and I don't really think I, I can stand in your shadow because, you know, you, you've done so much at this age. And uh, what you're doing is just, it's, it's great. It's phenomenal and, and you know, if anybody gives you grief, keep your head up because, you know. Whenever you're doing good, you're always gonna get grief from somebody. And so just overlook it and just keep doing what you're doing and doing great. And you know, you, you'll always be right. Um, I'm gonna choose, I'm gonna talk a little slow because I wanna choose my words right. Because Councilman McDonald always choo- uh, accuses me of being grouchy and I'm really grouchy about this right now because. I'm really grouchy towards the school district right now. And I don't wanna say what I shouldn't say, but um. You know, I, I think it's, I, I will say, I think a child, I'm gonna send out a challenge to the school board that they need to step up. Um, find ways to help you. For those who have ignored you, shame on you. I'm gonna say that to any uh, school staff. You know, that has ignored you, shame on them. And uh, they, you know, they need to do better. I'm sorry this has happened to you. Um, I'm a, I was a product of, of free and reduced lunch as well. Back in those days, we had these little cards you carried around.
Yeah, my husband was talking about them.
And for a while there, the, those that were recipients of the free and reduced uh, got a yellow card and everybody else got a white card.
Yes.
And so everybody, all your friends knew.
Yes.
Either way, there was no way of hiding whether or not you were free and reduced back then.
My husband's was red.
Yeah, it was just, it is what it is. And I've always been, you know, it's always heartbreaking to, to hear about the sandwich thing, the cheese sandwich. And, and I'm glad you clarified that. And I do understand the, the district's predicament that they're in, but again, they need to step up and do better. Um, and uh, again, I just wanted you to know that y'all are doing a great thing, a great thing. And you know, live your whole life, you know, you've made a difference in other people's lives. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, this evening, uh, as I said, I'd ask uh, Ms. Amador and Max and John to come forward. And uh, earlier, uh, Ms. Amador mentioned fifty thousand dollars. And actually, that was my number that I had mentioned to her. So um, uh. I know that's a point of conversation between the council. Um, fifty thousand dollars isn't gonna go far, obviously. You said that would feed about a hundred and thirty kids or there abouts a hundred and fifty kids for the rest of the school.
For the rest of this school year, yes.
Yeah. And so uh, I know we have a, uh, Serena, how much do we have in our ARPA balance?
Uh, four hundred, five hundred thousand.
So uh, I am recommending to city council that we fund the um, food fairness. Program at fifty thousand dollars.
Mayor. Um, discussion on this subject.
Sure.
So I know that um, uh, we've had, uh, our friends from Backpack Friends here before. Uh, and, and wanna introduce you to them if you don't already know, uh, Tom and, and uh, his crew.
Facebook friend me today.
Um, he, he has uh, navigated some of the same hurdles that you've talked about for over ten years. Uh, and probably has some insights, some pathways that, that, that may be hidden but available. Uh, especially in terms of identifying um, those kids that are at risk. That are often hard to approach either because of pride or shame or what have you. Um, and they've got some uh, uh. Policies in place that I think would be beneficial. And I think there's a, a strong mutual relationship there. Um, knowing the past research of, of uh, providing. Uh, meals to kids over the weekends. Uh, I mean, much less during the week. Uh, but just feeding kids over the weekends, uh, in the control groups and, and the studies that they did ten years ago. Found that not only did uh, uh, grades improve. But discipline referrals decreased. And anyone in this room that's ever gone to work angry and someone said, hey, man, why don't you have a candy bar or something?
Right.
Understands that if you come to school and your brain doesn't have everything that it needs to function. You're, you're not gonna have concentration, concentration skills. You're not gonna be the most agreeable person to deal with. And so, and so I think it's critical. I think it's absolutely critical that if we have the ability. To support your organization through the efforts of your, your sons, which uh. Can't give any higher accolades than Councilmember Reeves already has, but let me, let me try. No, you did great.
They, all of us, we all can think of.
I, I would, I would want to offer an amendment uh, to your motion, Mayor, that. Uh, that we allocate one hundred thousand dollars to this program. I, I can't think of a better. A better expense than to feed our children so that they can be successful.
Okay, and then how would we, since we probably can't just write out a check, would we, how would we do this in some reimbursement way? I guess we could.
I was just about to chime in. The motion would really need to be to have um, um. To have, to authorize the city manager to enter into a sub-reception agreement uh, with the organization. And we would um, enter into a sub-reception agreement under, under the ARPA guidelines for purposes of the use of these funds.
Okay, so I'll.
As, as a reimbursement agreement.
So reimbursement is always my preference, but it's uh, you know, up to city council. If it's not a reimbursement, we would certainly. Require appropriate documentation, evidencing a proper expenditure of the funds.
So it doesn't have to be reimbursement. We prefer reimbursement.
Correct. Yeah, reimbursement's always my, my, my preference, cause it's hard to claw back funds that have been spent if, if spent inappropriately.
And I, and I think if we cap the term at twelve months or, or through a school year terminating period, that's makes sense. And, or do we need to cap the expenditure?
When is the, excuse me, uh, Serena, when do the funds have to be expended?
Twenty six.
Twenty twenty six?
Twenty six.
Twenty twenty six.
So we got some time.
Yeah, so we could, then we could do this, we could run, we could run this three years annually, given the amount of money that we have. Uh, in the unexpendited ARPA funds, is that correct?
The question is to me though, to that point is that how do we, I mean, I was talking to Councilman McDonald about that. You need, you need a corpus that you have right there and then you're living off of the residuals of the corpus. Because this perpetual item just soliciting right there, that's not enough. But what, the question would be for someone who does this for a living, you know, what's, God bless you. What's the tipping point? What's the catalyst to allow for that, for the residuals where you just build, live off of that? So you have that corpus right there and, and you know, in future for that.
And I think the, I, I didn't get to articulate a response to that, but I think that what we're looking at here is, is kind of a bootstrapping or a kickstarting fund.
Uh, to get the ball rolling. I know that, that uh, Ms. Amador and I have some conversations in terms of, of fundraising. I know one or two things about that. Um, and uh, and we'll see if we can build that, that basis. By which, you know, you, you have an interest draw or whatever. Uh, eventually we'll be the si- they'll be the size of UT, right?
You know, I, I think that, what is it? Um. I think it's David Caesar, the only, we got kids who are still in the district and the schools.
I got grandkids.
Oh, okay. Well, we got, we, we got. Well, we got, we we got, we have to go to these parent teacher conference. And this, and this is what I, you know, for someone who's volunteered, been volunteering at these schools and seeing this, you know, for a surprise, I'm just I'm taken aback by what you're doing because I think that's absolutely wonderful. And so this says a lot about your age too, for doing those your age. This is a lot too. Two, it also draws attention to something that we've been bringing up for years here. Is that people will go, I mean, we're about to do Operation Turkey, all these other things, right? And we're aging. Everyone keeps looking at Austin and all these other areas. And when the need is still here. We used to have a principal over at um Henderson High School, Devon Pataville, who's now the superintendent at Georgetown. Was actually one of the people in who will to bring um Samsung to to Taylor, I might add. And just talking to him in the waiting room, I remember having that conversation about AP exams. You know, because at that point, you know, you're at Henderson, you know, a Title One school, what what's, what is that population? That's going to be not being captured, not being reflective. Because we look at our community, we oftentimes talk about, you know, oh, well, you know, we're a affluent, high income in community right there as well, but you're you're using such a substantial basis. Right here are these kids that are just, honestly, they just wanna be kids. You know, it's it's always frustrating. I think I I I tell people all the time, um, when my parents came to this country, we were on welfare programs. And, you know, I I always felt offended when people talk about how people just wanna continue to lead off a welfare. They just wanna bleed the system and everything. That's absurd. Everyone just needs a helping, I mean, Thurgood Marshall had it right. No one's ever been by their own bootstraps. There's always been someone down the line who's going and bent over, giving a hand and lent somebody up from there as well. And that's what these kids do. This is what these families need right now. And um, you know, I mean, I I I do get the frustration with the school district. I'm glad that you have Councilmember, you know, McDonald willing to navigate that because there has to be something done. I I get, I get the the legal rationale from what they're being said about that, but you gotta have a real conversation and you know, and see what we can do from a budgetary standpoint with this. I know they have their challenges, but this is something that's in the face of kids that they see every day. And that's something that has concerns.
Charlie. I have a question. Um, if we started out with fifty thousand dollars, um, would they be able to come back after we establish how this works and um ask for additional funding?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, actually, Mr. McDonald offered a friendly amendment to make it a hundred thousand dollars.
And he accepted.
And I accepted that. Um, so we have a motion and a second to uh appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to the food fairness program, a five oh one three C nonprofit. And uh directing city manager to um uh develop the Charlie, what did you call it?
Sub recipient agreement.
Develop the sub recipient agreement with the nonprofit and um so that we can get this program. Um, launched a little bit more than it is now. And believe me, you've done a great job.
You got all that, Trista?
And I I do believe the city manager is looking for direction on whether you want this to be a reimbursement.
I'm sorry. Before we, before we state that, does does that work within the guidelines of 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 your program? I mean, I I heard you, I saw a slide that said you had eleven thousand dollars uh i- in the bank, uh, and there was a balance of twelve thousand dollars. And so if you start identifying folks and and spend five or six, ten thousand dollars in a month, then you can apply for a reimbursement presumably. Would that work within the structure that y'all are envisioning over here? Do you need to talk to your board and find out if that's okay?
Um, they're actually not legally allowed to handle anything concerning the money. Um and I apologize, but you're gonna have to explain to me how that, how that would work, cause I'm not familiar with it.
Be a reimbursement program where submit that.
Yeah, it'll it'll be simple, uh, you know. It'll be pretty simple for you to do.
Okay, okay. So for instance, the thousand dollars that I covered last week, if I do that again, I would just invoice that or show a receipt of that.
Show a receipt for that.
And I think that
Teacher, I was never in business, so.
I think that we would need and like to know who you're helping, if there could be some sort of tracking or data that is kept uh for this funding.
I could, I mean, for the, for the four that I've helped, I have names, but
I don't know if it's necessarily names. I'm I'm thinking more demographic in- information.
I think if you can pull that information, great. But again, because of the privacy and confidentiality, you may not be able to do that, but as best as you can.
So you would wanna know, for instance, the the four that we've helped, you would wanna know.
Maybe even which schools you're you're helping, so we can identify areas, pockets. There's a lot of information to learn from what you're doing as well, um, as we address food insecurity here in in inside of the city.
So like for full demographics, you would wanna know, uh, Wise High School freshman or race, ethnicity?
I'm not sure how much information she's gonna be able to get.
I just, I just wish there was a way we could, we could somehow partner with the district so that you could write the check, we could pay you back, but the district could provide some of the reporting information.
Maybe, maybe this is a spark to make.
Here's a question that might help us. So when you write a check uh to the district, is it, is it per campus that you're clearing these funds?
That's the way they were having me do it and I stopped because I have no way of knowing if I'm paying off a kid that only has a dollar and, you know, debt and his parents are more than willing, just forgot. Or if I'm helping the kids that really are in need. And so that's why I started circumventing the district and going my own way. And so with these last three, I was called in, like I said, I do happen to know their, I saw them, I met them, so I happen to know their names and their their race and their ethnicity and what homeschool they went to, but I don't necessarily know if I would have that information. I would know homeschool for sure.
Right. And you did say you required them to fill out an application.
I always ask, have they filled out an application? And if they have not, then the social worker or the counselor has them do that. And I give them enough funds to cover if they were, if they're approved. And then if the application comes back as not approved, then they give me a callback.
The worst thing we could do is put so many requirements on you for reporting that it makes it impossible.
So I I think maybe perhaps just a commitment to try to provide some sort of 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 data.
And and let me say one other thing, and cause I asked Ms. Amador this, I I, to our knowledge and to your knowledge, is this the only program of this type in the state of Texas? I mean, there may be, but I
It's the closest I've heard are kids running lemonade stands to try and pay off school lunch debt, but there is not an official five oh one C three.
So this could be a kind of a development of a model that could be duplicated in either school districts and so forth.
So it sounds like we need to get the community impact.
Any news entity is here, I was gonna ask them to please print this. I know, and I was gonna, I was hoping that that was there. Well, I was gonna ask so that, yeah, that this would be out in the public, they know. And, you know, get that information out there. Because if I wrote it, I'd say, once the city council, once again, has to deal with the school district refuses to do.
I don't wanna go down that.
That's why I said I'm not writing it, but you know what? It needs to be said. And I'll say it, and if they don't like it, come to me.
You don't know the path that someone else is walking right now, so I I'm always hesitant to start throwing out.
That's why he and I love to banter.
Yes, I have a, Mr. Matheus calling the question. We have a motion and a second with the friendly amendment and the direction to the city manager to uh move forward to work with the food fairness program. Motion carried. Congratulations. And congratulations to John and Max. Thank you, guys. You guys are awesome.
And I'm gonna go before I cry.
Thank you. Uh, we will be in touch. Thank you, boys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the items that were pulled, um.
Uh, Mayor, we need to take action on the settlement in five D.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Five, oh yeah, five B. I'm sorry, what?
Oh, D, they said B.
D, D is in dollar. Delta, thank you, sorry.
Move to approve the uh the five D settlement. Okay, so we did have a uh uh discussion, uh, in executive session on five D, uh, which is the discussing consideration regarding litigation, settlement and arbitration fees of for Austin Materials LLC versus.
I I I might have a question on this.
Yeah, we, we have not officially in open session approved the settlement agreement yet. That's what this action is.
Do we have a copy of the settlement agreement in writing? That that we have been able to review because I believe we agreed in concept.
If you wanna, if you wanna push it off, we can push it off and I can have um, I can have um, Mr. Chapman provide a copy of the settlement agreement. It's just another two weeks, we don't get paid, that's all.
Is it, is it, is there any time sensitivity other than that?
Other than us not getting paid, no.
When you say us, you mean?
Not us.
Well, us, this, when I said, the collective city.
I've never met a lawyer that didn't get paid.
All right, so we'll uh post, what what's the right word? Postpone or?
Yeah, well, we don't have to take any action. I'll just, I'll make sure that Mr. Chapman provides a copy of the settlement agreement.
All right, move to postpone five D.
All right, Trista, you have the list.
Four A.
Yeah, four A.
Item four A. Approving an ordinance on first reading with a caption reading and ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, amending chapter thirty one, article two of the City of Flugerville Code of Ordinances as amended by adding thirty one point two one titled Reserve Police Force, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability clause and providing an effective date.
So I know I I pulled this item, I think, uh, Mr. Rogers, you've pulled it as well. Uh, this feels like it's a a pretty substantial policy decision. I would only recommend that we uh perhaps take this back as a lunch and learn so we can understand more of the uh intent and purpose and uh see what the guidelines are for for this program.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I was pretty surprised, I'm just, I'm being blunt. I was surprised this was on consent. I mean, this is, I mean, I mean, I I I definitely am intrigued by the concept, but I mean, you know, I I think that we need to have a conversation about it, at least a presentation. And I think the community needs to hear about it. It's interesting.
It is brought to my attention that we've been doing this for years.
Many, so by law, we need to um formally adopt it.
That's, that would be a reason why to have this in conversation, it's supposed to consent.
We have, we have a militia we don't know about.
What you just said was literally.
Sure, well, I'm happy to share with you the the men and women that have helped our police department and will share. Why don't you talk about those?
Do we have a presentation?
This isn't the citizens on patrol, is it?
They're not out on the street, no.
The the five, the five people that we have that are currently part of the reserve force um have been part of the reserve force from before I got here, the the reserve.
So it's been, we've had a reserve force for years, what you're saying to us.
Yes.
Just not statutorily.
And the reason for that, uh, council member is because our, these five officers are not used in official capacity. They are not given uniforms, they are not used on the street, they don't make arrests. These five officers are used for their specialized skill sets, firearm instructor, tactical instructor, arson investigator, animal crimes investigator.
How about, it maybe be better for the public to understand, let's talk about what is a reserve force?
So a reserve force in, most agencies in the state of Texas have a reserve force. It's our smaller agencies that in say, West Texas that are, don't have the people, so they would that they don't have the officers, so they're going out and saying, and recruiting. This isn't for a recruiting tool for for most agencies in the state. Most agencies in the state use this the same exact way that we have been here in Flugerville. Um, so, but the reserve officer force would allow us to have these reserve officers come in, um, sign on to CAD, go out in a police car and answer calls for service. That is what the purpose of the reserve force is, or that's what they can do. We don't do that.
Will they be uniformed now in this way?
No, ma'am. So
But this allows them to be.
At my discretion, but we have no intention to allow them to.
And that's why I would like us to have an intention discussion.
Like what what he's saying is exactly the point, is that we may not do that now, but it has the allowance and the flexibility to do so. And that's not a small thing.
Uh, the the way the ordinance reads to me now, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it reads to me like this is sort of the the National Guard version of the Flugerville Police Department. We have an emergency and you bring in extra twenty guys in who don't get paid normally, but they get paid when they're on call. And, you know, we're having the ice storm, right? We we have a bunch of our officers can't get in because the all the highways are frozen over, but we've got twenty guys who live in Flugerville and they get paid when we bring them in for the ice storm.
They're not paid at all.
Okay, but they get called up and I'm afraid we have a Barney Fife problem. And maybe, I'm, that's, you know, just my imagination. But I am concerned about having guys, you know, in uniform, possibly armed, who while they are T Cole certified, are not running with the Flugerville PD every day. And they may not be up on every single new uh policy and procedure that we have. And um, I, I'm sure there are answers to all of these questions, but there are a lot of questions that that pop up.
And to that point, in order for them to be armed in this capacity, they have to be specifically named and approved by city council, as I understood it, at least as of twenty twenty five by the the latest revision of the statute.
Yes.
But but that that is to say, I mean, if you've got a firearms instructor who is fulfilling this role, seems as though that individual's gonna be armed. He's instructing on firearms, he's he's gotta be armed in some capacity.
And and that's where, and that's where the conversation, like, I mean, and and let's be clear. We, Serena's advocating for you well up here. What we're saying is, what we're saying is this, that we're not saying this is nefarious purpose or anything like that whatsoever. Actually, I think it's quite intriguing. Um, you know, I, the T Cole training requirements and working from there, but to hear that this has been going on, we weren't cognizant of, you're trying to codify it. And then have the various questions that are being brought up about what you do and the flexibility, once this has been codified and made policy, this is the reason why, one, it should never have been on consent. And then two, why you would expect to have a a further conversation about this. Cause I don't expect for you to be cognizant of all the questions we're gonna have here. It's kinda like, no, this is what's going on. We wanna make this clear, make sure we're cool about it. Now, I'm not worried or think that many people even remember who Barney Fife is, but you know, it'd be good to have a conversation about that and hopefully see.
Then let's, let's have the conversation.
And and to that point, I will tell you, my my father participates in something like our our citizens on patrol. I think it's the citizens assisting plaino police caps. Uh, and and I'm under the impression it's probably under this this article, under the statute, because he can write um tickets for handicap parking.
Our COPs cannot.
Hey, our COPs cannot, but I bet, imagine under this uh, this statute, we could enable our COPs who are not armed uh to go out and write certain tickets. They can volunteer and run.
They're not T Cole certified.
Yeah, I was gonna say. The way this statute's written is you're, it requires T Cole certification.
And and they could get certified. But
Sure.
There's, there's other applications of this program that we might want to explore. And there are other applications of this program that we might want to ensure that we.
What do you want to strike them up with?
Uh, and that's why, like I said, I I didn't, I don't think we're all prepared to have this conversation and make a decision this evening. That's why I would love to see it as a, as a lunch.
It, it, and I'm just gonna voice a counter agreement that that it it it's, I I mean, I read this, it's pretty straightforward. It's it's, it's, I'm not gonna say it's simple because there's some, some interwoven complexities here, but it's it's straightforward, right? And and I think that um, uh, you know, it, for me, the question is, we either we either trust our chief or we don't. Uh, and and I know that's not what you're saying, but that's what I'm saying. For me, this, this is uh, in terms of, you know, the members that are on this reserve police, we approve them, right? And so
No.
That that's what, I'm pretty sure I read.
Do we approve the individual members or only those who carry firearms?
Yeah, and so, and so it's not like you're never gonna have a resume or background or anything. Everyone that wants to work for the city for free is gonna stand before us and say, hey, I'm a good individual. Here's my service record. I'm T Cole certified. I meet all.
is gonna stand before us and say, hey, I'm a good individual, here's my service record, I'm T-Cole certified, I meet all these requirements, and I'd like to volunteer in the reserve force. And this just makes it official, gives the chief a way of, of assigning duties to these people that, that is within the confines of the letter of the law. It does nothing more than that. And so I, I think this gives us great visibility into this program, and, and I support this as it's written. Uh, there's policy.
This also allows us to, as I understand it, carry the commission of these individuals, correct?
Yes, sir.
What, what does that mean, though? What does it mean to carry someone's commission?
It allows them to stay as an active police officer. So T-Cole mandates forty hours of training within a two-year period. So as a reserve police officer, those officers are, they must complete that training to stay T-Cole certified. So that just means that we're allowing them to, to be a reserve officer, so we're holding that commission for them, that they're a member of a, of the Flugerville Police Department Reserve.
So they are recognized as a member of the, the Flugerville Police Department. Does that add any additional liability or expense to us, Charlie?
Um, there's no liability to us unless they're on, unless they're, we put them on the street, just like any other officer.
And, and we are, so you, either we're carrying their commission and gaining no benefit, or we're carrying their commission and taking on liability.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we're not getting any benefit, because he's, he's putting them in different capacities outside of.
You, you say putting them on the street, but putting them in educational.
No, putting them in, 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 in active duty.
In act, because when you think of liability.
Taking them off the reserve force and, and ha, well, I guess not off the reserve, but putting them in a uniform and having them actively enforce the laws of the state.
So does that change the, the definition of the individual? I mean, it's still a reserve officer.
It's still a reserve officer. But, but again, these are some, these are questions that happen. I definitely have plenty of questions to know. It's like you said, this existed before you did, okay? We're, we're not spring chickens. Why are we just hearing about this?
That is the purpose of us having it on the agenda. I hope that we can have this discussion. Further questions y'all have? We bring it back the second time.
Well, I disagree. Well, okay, I disagree with you, because it was on consent. If we were, if the purpose was to have a conversation.
No, 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 I'm saying if you want a conversation, we're happy to pull it and happy to have that conversation.
I, being on consent, I'm not necessarily prepared to have the entire conversation that I think we need to have this.
We read the statute very as we had done it, which was narrow. It has a broader scope that we weren't, we weren't entertaining. We weren't entertaining.
You weren't going to implement it, but you still have the flexibility to do so at a, at a time during, and you know how it is when it comes to policy, it's not necessarily, who's, if you, James, everybody else goes, it's not about now, what happens in the future.
Agreed, happy to.
If, if you want to authorize the, the very narrow program that we've got now, let's have a, a, an ordinance that comes forward that authorizes that. This has some, a number of things, and, and I don't, I don't know that they're required by, by, uh, state legislation, but the idea of, of the council members appointing individual officers strikes me as silly. We have no idea whether.
Wait, 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 okay, so, so let me, let me back up, and let me explain. Somebody who's been working with T-Cole and, and police agencies for the last eight to nine years on this, that has been a conversation with police departments across the state for, for years about that, is that, wait, ultimately, wait a minute, if we're, but what about the council that's in charge of there? So consequently, I'm not too surprised that the statute, just like you said, Serena, I'm not surprised the statute reads like that, because if you're going to go, it's already, they feel like we already removed far enough, like we just, oh, something happens to our police chief, well, it's the city manager's fault. And oftentimes, the officers are like, wait a minute, you've got, you've got, you've got a city council that should be, you mean, responsible for that. So if we're creating a reserve unit, they're saying essentially, okay, you can do that, but y'all are the ones who are gonna look at it. So that's the, that's the thought process behind that.
The police chief is responsible for hiring the regular officers, why wouldn't he be responsible for hiring the reserve officers?
Wait, wait, you're trying to say the state of Texas makes statutes that are crazy? Huh, that's weird.
Chief, you know, and the, the way it's, it's written, the, the chief has the unilateral authority to fire them. So the council has to hire them, but the council can't fire them. The police chief can't hire them, but he has the authority to fire them.
So, so the appointment is to the chief, and we're approving the appointments is all. It's, it is, it is an opportunity for us to, to review as elected officials, these appointments. Now, I, I don't see anything wrong with that, but I don't, the question I like that.
Are we gonna reserve, look at all of the appointments the police chief makes?
That's not the piece of legislation that's before, before us right now.
Well, why would we do one and not the other?
I would like to ask, chief, is, um, uh, in terms of, of, uh, the reserve officers, uh, what are the types of duties that you normally allocate, uh, to these reserve officers, and, and, and what do you see in, in future deployments of, of your reserve force if we approve it?
It is training. Uh, they're all used in a training capacity. None of them, like I said, have been put on the street or used in an official capacity, where they're answering calls for service or having contact with the public. Um, we use them for our firearms instructor, tactical instructor, uh, for our officers, um, for, um, clearing buildings. Uh, we use them for that. We also know that we have an arson investigator that are, some of our, the, the levels of certification for arson investigator, I don't know how far they go up, he's all the way up here where our detectives are working their way up. So at any arson, we would call him in and he would help, assist us with the investigation. He could ask questions to the suspects, same on the animal crime side. So we're just holding their commission for their expertise. If we need them to come in, they come in, but otherwise, they do not ever go on the street or represent the Flugerville Police Department in a, in official capacity. It's only here.
What I'm hearing is, uh, unlike some comment I heard earlier, is, is there's a huge benefit to the city to have a reserve force, just in terms of leveraging the extreme numbers of years of, of experience, of knowledge, uh, of expertise, uh, that, that can be transferred and communicated to, to the officers that, that are under your direct command.
Yes, sir, and, and because T-Cole mandates our training at certain levels, our calls for service have been flown. So by having a firearm instructor, we don't have to pull a full-time officer off the street to qualify fifteen people. That's gonna take four hours. This volunteer, this reserve officer volunteers his time. He comes in and he can knock out all of those officers while we still have our coverage on the street. Otherwise, we're always cycling in, and it's, it can, it, it, at times, it, it works fine with off days, four days on, four days off, but then at other times, it's just easier to use our firearm instructor or our tactical instructor to keep our, our full-time officers doing their full-time job.
Do they, are they required to be a member of our reserve force in order to perform those functions for you?
In order for them to, for our officers to get T-Cole credit, yes. They have to be T, they have to be.
They have to be T-Cole certified, they have to, they have to have a commission, but does it have to be through our program?
No, sir, it does not have to be, but, um, it'd be like some, another agency calling me saying, hey, give me your, your firearm instructors. No way, I need them on the street. So it's, it, they're in-house.
It's a mutually beneficial relationship.
Right, right.
Why aren't we just adding these five people to the payroll as part-timers?
Because per the state statute, with part-time, they're, you must offer them full-time benefits. So even though a part-time officer may only work eight hours a month, that, that eight, that part-time officer now has to have full-time benefits.
So the choice is, we can either pay them nothing or a whole bunch, and there's nothing in between.
Wait, 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 no, 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 no. Again, we were saying it's mutually beneficial because of the accreditation. That's, that's the incentive for them.
So all they're getting out of that, but, but they're working like part-timers who are not getting paid.
They're getting in kind, compensation, yeah.
But they're getting their commission here, yeah.
They're getting their commission.
Again, I s, I see a huge benefit to the city for this. I don't see any sort of nefarious ends to, to approving this this evening. Um, if, if, you know, if you want to learn more about it, I'm sure in the, 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 the program that I took for the, the, uh, I already forgot the name of it, Citizens Police Academy.
Oh, Citizens Police Academy.
We, we can add a week to it that would talk about what the reserve officers do and, and learn more in depth on that. Uh, I highly recommend that for.
I have a question, chief, before we move on. I know you don't want to put them on the streets, um, but what, but you can, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you?
You, you, yes, by law, yes, ma'am. But, um, if we were ever in a need to that effect, we also have Travis County DPS, we're gonna call them first, and we would never, ever go to the reserves to say, hey, here's uniforms, here's a police car.
I guess my concern is the fact that you can't.
Yeah.
The statute actually requires them to be approved by this body before they can carry weapons or be officers of the city.
So if there ever came a situation where they were needed to be on the streets, we would know about that first?
Yes, ma'am, oh, absolutely. But that, I don't ever see that, I, I don't ever see that scenario, the scenario happening.
Yeah, I've never seen that happen.
So then, let me, let me, okay, so let me, let me ask, let me, let me ask this question then, okay? Because Charlie brought that up, this is what the statute requires. If we've had this for years, have we been carrying their commission for years?
Yes, sir.
Yes, before I got here.
So why do we need this, right?
Wow.
Because I, I need to be, there's a lot of things that we uncover.
Let, let's, 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 at least, until next meeting, that's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move, we postpone.
Second. Good boy.
What information would y'all like in between now and then?
I'd like the, I'd, I'd like an alternative version of the, of the ordinance presented that just authorizes what we're already doing, rather than this ordinance that authorizes a lot more than what we're already doing.
Well, I think city manager can get with council members that are wishing to have that additional information. They have a motion in the second to, what, what was the motion?
Postpone.
Postpone.
Till next meeting.
Till next meeting. Motion barely carried.
I'm sorry to clarify. So we're redoing the first reading, not doing the second reading, just going back to a first reading, correct? Okay.
Okay. Well, that was an easy item. Can we get, can we get to the complicated ones?
Item four B, approving an ordinance on first reading with a caption reading ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, amending the City of Flugerville, Texas Code of Ordnances, chapter seventy-two, regarding speed limits on city streets, Jesse Bowles Road and Cameron Road, to establish prima facie maximum speeds, providing for a penalty for violation of chapter seventy-two as a class D misdemeanor and a fine in an amount not to exceed two hundred dollars, repealing all ordinances to the extent they are in conflict, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
This had to be Doug, because he wants the speed out there, he wants the speed out there.
This is, this was indeed me. No, I think, I think my main question is, is actually to Charlie, um, because I've gotten some conflicting information in, in my back and forth with staff on this. Uh, the ordinance, the, uh, the twenty-five mile per hour section, uh, is that regulatory or advisory?
I, I'm sorry, I don't think I understand the question.
I thought it was advisory based on the packet.
The, the, the ordinance makes it look regulatory, and, and I just want to make sure I understand that.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to pull up the ordinance and take a look at it.
Because, remember how we talked about the.
So I'm sorry, we have somebody at the podium.
I was gonna wait.
Well, do you know if it's regla, uh, she could answer the question.
That's true.
Uh, yes, so I can answer that question. First of all, I'm Katie Cam, the new Assistant Director of Traffic and Transportation.
Pleasure meeting you.
Yes, nice to meet y'all too.
Welcome aboard.
It's been a pleasure working here so far, so, yeah.
Wait, you said so far.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so this is your first meeting, so things change.
It's only eight forty-seven, we can postpone this item till later.
Um, I can, uh, I can answer the question, I actually brought show and tell item here. So, um, yes, it is an advisory speed, uh, and, um, the Texas Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices references this particular document, and, and there it actually states that, uh, Transportation Commission Men in Order City Ordinance or County Ordinance is not required for advisory speed zones, but is required for regulatory speed zones. So you can pass an ordinance to make it an official thing via ordinance, or you don't have to.
And Charlie, I'm, I'm looking at the, um, the ordinance in front of us, uh, it says schedule two, speed limits on city streets, the prima facie maximum speed limits for the section on streets described below are hereby determined to be as follows, and, and it lists this with the twenty-five. That looks like regulatory to me.
It looks like regulatory to me as well.
But I'm hearing that it's advisory.
It looks regul, it looks regulatory to me, yes.
Okay. Um, and then I have my own concerns with twenty-five mile per hour regulatory speed limits, and I would advise that we not do that. Uh, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with advisory, but the ordinance is written.
Can you expand on why?
I can, I can.
Car doesn't go that slow.
Because in order for us to pass, and, and Charlie, you'll have to, uh, to clear up if I misspeak, but in order for us to, uh, establish a speed limit below thirty miles per hour, uh, uh, twenty-five mile per hour speed limit require, state law requires that we determine that the street is unsafe at that speed, i- is this specific language? Uh, we have to find that. I don't see anything in the findings and the, the whereas statements that this is, uh, an unsafe street at, at thirty. We, we have to specifically find that, I believe, under state law. Uh, and then there are a whole host of reporting requirements that go along with that, that I do not believe that we have ever undertaken, uh, and I don't think that's a burden that we would like to undertake. Uh, it's, it's a lot more administration. Hence, I do not believe that a twenty-five mile per hour regulatory speed limit is advantageous to set.
Mayor, it sounds like that comes from my man who's fought a lot of speeding tickets, so.
I have not fought any in a good long time.
But, I mean, I think, I think it all makes, that, what you said makes sense.
Okay, any other comment or questions?
So I would, uh, I suppose, Charlie, do you have any, anything to add to my diatribe there?
No, sir.
All right. Uh, I would, I would move that we approve this, uh, with the amendment that we strike the, um, uh, the row of the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit.
Second. And motion in second with the amendment.
I'm gonna go off-roading out there with Doug later on.
I, I got a truck now.
Yes.
He does, he's got a truck, he's gonna let your truck, yeah. Because I was like, I think I'm the only one here who drives in that street.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for, for humoring me on that item.
Next item is item four C, approving an ordinance on first and final reading with a caption reading an ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, adopting the second amendment to the FY twenty-three budget for the City of Flugerville and providing an effective date.
There are specific questions or?
Doug again, Doug.
Ah, yes, this was me. Um, let me find my notes. Uh, I think as we, as we went through this item, I saw an awful lot of items that, uh, we were, uh, gaining, gaining revenue, offsetting revenue for, for the expenses, uh, and that offsetting revenue seemed like it wasn't necessarily real revenue. It was, it was stuff that was being pushed to, to the next budget, uh, and my largest frustration with that, uh, was that so much of that was depicted, you know, just, just two months ago as being money that we expected to spend before the end of the year, and then, uh, obviously, we didn't spend it. Uh, it's money that is not allocated in the current budget and would likely have to be added. So I, I, I'm taking issue with our source of revenue on this, uh, budget amendment, and frustrated with the process that we didn't, uh, foresee this during the budget process, because it seems as though, you know, we went through and there were some, some very specific numbers, uh, as we went through budgeting, uh, that, uh, that we were projected to spend, uh, and then didn't. And I think that changes the conversation quite a bit. So it was, it was a bit frustrating for me to go through this.
So for the history of this, this is not the first time, nor will be the last time he complains about that, but it's about the actual transparency of what that's, what's actually occurring from there. And, um, I mean, and that, and that's the conversation, and, and again, not blaming staff, but that, but that's been the conversation, you know, for years about that, is that, okay, well, is that really offsetting? Is that really it for moving it from here? Did we really need to do that? We were saying the last couple of ones, we were gonna push forward that, and it didn't happen, so.
Yeah, I can give you, you know, just one example, it's, it's pretty easy to see, you know, in communications, we had a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, budgeted for, for other professional fees. Uh, we had actually projected to spend a hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred dollars, so two hundred dollars more than, than was budgeted, uh, and, uh, somehow we freed up a hundred thousand dollars in that. Uh, I think that's for the website redesign project, so obviously, it seems like if we were two months before the end of the fiscal year, we probably should have known whether or not we were gonna spend that in that year. We said we were, we didn't, now we're pushing it forward, so it's gonna be subsequent years.
Dominant.
Just, just one example.
I wish we could do two-year budgets. That would save us on some of that.
You know, we, there's, there's nothing that stops us.
This means the problems are twice as big.
Nothing that, that stops that transparency. Uh, I love, dude, there was also, I, I noticed we, uh, transferred some vehicle lease agreements, uh, into the general fund, and I was under the impression we were doing quite a bit to, uh, move vehicle capital leases to debt service. I wasn't really clear on why we moved these vehicle lease agreements back to the general fund. Uh, the, the debt service fund seemed like. Uh, the, the debt service fund seemed like the appropriate place to do that and, and, uh, I guess these, I, I gotta note that these weren't considered lease purchase agreements, but I, I didn't think any of our lease agreements on vehicles were lease purchase agreements, they're, they're all capital leases. Um, so the, I, I guess, yes, just, sorry, just a lot of frustration with this item, uh, that I needed to bring up.
Do you want us to specifically go through those? We're happy to do so.
Would you like me to?
I, if, if it pleases.
I can say it all, say it all out loud. Um, traffic signals, uh, we, we recruited, what, four hundred thousand dollars from traffic signals? So did we not do a traffic signal project that we had budgeted and were expected to do before the end of the fiscal year? And we decided we weren't gonna do it.
On the top of my head.
Cause we had projected to spend four hundred thousand dollars on traffic signals and, and apparently we didn't.
Sure, we found cost savings, um, on the traffic signal projects that we were allocated in that account, um, we were able to, I don't know how to speak to that one in particular.
And, and you have, uh.
Things happen.
Yeah.
Operational.
So the four hundred thousand, um, cor- correlates with our advanced traffic management system that we're trying to put in place. And there was a couple of things on that, um, that we couldn't put in place because there was a communications issue with that project.
When did we discover that communications issue?
Um, recently, we discovered that the radios that we were, that we were trying to put in place, we're not communicating, that was about a month and a half ago.
With, um, a month and a half ago, so that would be after the end of the fiscal year? That'd be in October?
Uh, if that's the, the.
Probably, that'd be right around October first and, and we had projected to spend this in last year's fiscal year, so if we didn't figure that out until this year, I don't understand why we projected to spend it last year.
I think we're gonna request the funds to be rolled over so that we can put in, like, items like CCTV as a part of the.
And if I look at the current budget, it's, uh, it's got a column for projected spend in last fiscal year and that money was included in the projected spend for last fiscal year and then we found out after the year was over that we weren't gonna spend it, that seems like we should've known a little ahead of time.
You're correct, we should've known that, we didn't do that projection correctly, thank you, Evan.
Well, that's too simple of an answer.
But, but, I mean, it was a, we, but when you, when you do projections, we, we've missed them, sure, and I'll take that. We've missed those projections and, um, I know it's something that we literally go line by line by and I will do a better job of making sure it's getting spent. It's, no, that's a real problem.
But the fallout of that is now, i- instead of that money, we now understand that we've got a, a radio communications issue that we need to solve, uh, and I imagine that's going to be an even bigger spend item now that we've, there's how much we thought we were gonna spend and now we got a problem, so it's probably gonna cost us more. But we're, in, instead of rolling that money forward, we're saying, hey, allocate that money to other expenses and that's gonna have to be new money that comes from somewhere else in the future, we're not really gonna forward.
I don't think that's what we're doing, I'm sorry.
I mean, that's the whole nature of the budget amendment, is that we're documenting our expenses and documenting other revenue sources.
No, Lauren, I, I want Lauren to speak to that, that's not how I would, um, characterize a budget amendment.
Is our finance director missing or?
Yes. This week, if.
Okay.
So for FY twenty-three finals, we have found where we have unspent funds that we were able to offset with other expenditures that were over budget. In FY twenty-four, we will revisit any, um, when we do look at unspent expenditures, we do, um, look to see if they need to be rolled over, but we can only roll over a, like a current contract that is in progress. So we would come to you, uh, with another amendment in FY twenty-four.
So, so. So our expectation is that this budget amendment zeros out the money that we had planned to spend last year and then we'll expect another budget amendment to add that money in or to create a new contract, a new account for that somewhere in the future. I think my, my frustration here, okay, the, the documentation we have in the packet, the general fund net change is zero. It is, here's a list of all the, the expenses that were over budget, were not in budget and here's where we're going to claim that money's coming from and that's these other expenses, so it, 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 it doesn't feel clean to me, it doesn't feel transparent.
Sure.
Sure. And then that zero is intended to show that we are not asking for additional funds.
But then in our, um, utility funds, we, we're, we're perfectly fine with throwing in that change. Just our general fund, we're, we're zeroing now.
Correct, we did have available fund balance in the utility fund.
Well, we, we also have available fund balance in the general fund.
In our general fund too.
Yes.
But, but we instead documented it as a, as a net no change.
I, I think that, I mean, yeah, this really.
And, and, and I, I apologize, I, I didn't, you know, I'm not intending to call people out on the carpet publicly, this isn't intended to be a public flogging, but we've got quite a few items in here that are, uh, questionable to, to say the least.
But if, if this is a standard practice throughout the year and previous years, then we really need to look at that.
Well, and that's what the thing is, is that, I mean, and Nate, I'm so sorry, I know that you're up there, but we're, we're having the conversation here, no, I mean, I mean, but that's, that's, that's the point. Is the point is, is that, just like you said, we've had this practice over here with us, this has been brought, I mean, ever since I've been on council with them, this, this has always been brought up, you know, regarding that and, and the issues from there as well and get some clarity from that. And to be fair, it doesn't allow for transparency, you know, you know, for that, in the end, I get, I get what you're saying, cause it's like.
I, I haven't been able to speak to that, I would like to.
It washed it out, but I, I, I can understand what he's saying.
It's not a, let me, okay, so there's different philosophies on that, instead of taking from a fund balance, we take the net savings from other departments in the same real time to cover that cost. So I can, what you're calling net zero isn't net, it, it, it's funding that is currently avai- available, so I'm not going to dip into a fund, if that helps at all.
But it is, it's, it's money that we said we were going to spend that we ended up not spending and okay, that nets out. But it's money that two months ago, we said we were going to spend and that's, that's my real frustration, you know, when we say we're gonna spend taxpayer dollars, we're, we're doing it for the benefit of the taxpayers and now we have, uh, what is it, one point four million dollars in, in projects here that we did, that we said we were going to accomplish, just two months ago, we said we were going to accomplish these things. Uh, and we today say, oh, by the way, we didn't get that done.
And, and that's, yeah, yes, operationally that happens and this is our attempt to be transparent. So to say it's not transparent, this is the whole purpose of doing budget amendments, is to be transparent, to say that that didn't happen, that's, I wanna be.
But, but we should've known that one point four million dollars in money was not going to be spent.
I'll repeat myself, you are correct and, and I've gotta get better at doing projections.
And that's, that's the root point, so. When, and that's why, that's why you asked the question, when did you know we weren't going to spend that?
And the projections were done even before that, you're absolute, uh, when we make projections, um, we have to do that, that, if you look at that process of the, the budget, it, they're done so early. So it is hard whenever you're trying in March to make projections for the end of September. So how we can figure out how to clean those up monthly might help because we're doing, we start our budget process in March. So I'm asking department heads to say, are you gonna spend that four hundred thousand by September thirtieth? And they say, sure we are, and we gotta figure out how to.
I was about to say, I, I.
I gotta get better.
I work for the controller's office, I work for Health and Human Services, this is the same issue and, you know, our fiscal year ends August thirty-one. And so it's the same issue though, you know, that he's talking about right here and then you're like, wait, wait a minute, why are we pushing this to, you know, September second? As opposed to you just said back July, something, you're gonna do this right there. And, I mean, and, and we're not saying that you're, I mean, this is a horrendous job, blah, blah, everything like that as well. In fact, honestly, your projections, we've said over and over again, are pretty on point and spontaneous and we wish other entities would follow those ideas. So, um, you know, it's just, this has been something that's been brought up numerous times and so, like, what can we do to help ameliorate it?
Uh, we've got our, our IT contracts, uh, in here, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in that. Seems like our IT contract should probably be on a pretty standard fiscal.
So that one's.
We, we discovered that we didn't need some software or we really.
So we have now changed, uh, that's actually a, um, that's a fun one. Um, we actually have changed the way, so we have now, um, centralized software uh, into IT so that they can manage that because if you can imagine with fifteen, twenty different departments saying, oh, I need this software, I need this software, they were putting that software into their budgets and then never, not, not getting it or not checking with IT that, oh, we already have something similar, et cetera. So I have changed our entire process for next year for how we centralize IT. So that was a, um, I would call it an error in our process by which we allowed departments to put in the software that they needed and then, and they didn't spend it, so we're trying to clean it up in this one.
Uh, I would say my biggest takeaway on this is, uh, perhaps towards the end of the budget cycle, uh, when we do get that final revision, we need to make sure that the projections have been rebetted at that point in time.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Anybody else? Motion to approve.
I was gonna say we got, yes, the second.
Have a motion and second to approve. All right, motion carried.
Four J?
Next item is item four J, approving a conditional purchase agreement and associated conveyance documents between Flugerville Cameron Properties LLC, parcel number six, and the city of Flugerville as necessary to acquire real property interest for the Willbarger Creek wastewater interceptor project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
And this item was?
Pulled by me, I wanted to get a little conversation, yeah.
Cause there's two that are similar, so you're curious about this parcel?
Yes.
Okay, parcel number six.
Yeah, four J as opposed to four K.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, uh, Mayor, Councilman Miss Breland, for the record. Jeff Dunsworth, Assistant Director of Utilities, City Engineer. Uh, this is regarding the, uh, Willbarg- Willbarger wastewater interceptor, it's a fifty-four inch pipeline, um, so to, uh, bring wastewater flows into our new, uh, wastewater treatment plant that Mr. Pritchett spoke so eloquently about earlier. It's currently under the, uh, CMAR underway with the CMAR process. To have a number of parcels involved in this, uh, in this right away, this easement simply protects our, uh, pipeline, allows it to be in the place that it's indicated on this, uh, exhibit. Uh, it's also involves a temporary construction easement, permanent easement is for, uh, operation and maintenance and temporary easement is courses just for, uh, construction. The permanent easement is eighty feet in length or width, the temporary varies from twenty, uh, in one spot to forty in the other. I have, uh, with me our, uh, talented, uh, right away manager, Ms. Norma Martinez and we will gladly accept, uh, and attempt to answer any questions right out.
I like how attempts they work, no, in all sincerity, I just wanted to show this up and say again how, how much laborious this whole process is as different parts, moving parts over here, how staff has done an excellent job in planning this and working for this and just highlight again, I, one of the things I've heard, to be frank, a lot over the last several weeks, particularly with, um, people looking at regarding our fees and other items right there is that what's our money going to? I can't believe this is happening, what's occurring right here as well? Well, this is part of it, this is part of what we're doing right here to make sure that you have clean water, you're able to go ahead and, um, you know, ha- we have our growth and development done in a responsible and fiscally, financially sound manner in doing so and you, making these kind of agreements, execution of these purchase amendments, that makes all the difference in the world. May we entertain a motion to approve?
Sure. Second.
Have a motion and second to approve this item.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you all, appreciate you using your time.
Motion carried.
Next item is four L, approving a professional services supplemental agreement with Dunham Engineering in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars for professional engineering services associated with the historic elevated tank rehabilitation project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Is, is this one?
No, this was not me.
This is me, this falls under you?
No, this is.
So, it's a lighting.
I know, okay.
What's a water project, it's a water.
I know what it is, I wanted to make sure the citizens see.
It has nothing to do with interceptors.
Yeah, I was like, huh.
It, it is me, we're doing the, currently doing the rehabilitation project, so it kinda made sense that we already are kinda working on it, so.
Interesting.
Um, so.
And you're looking for a presentation or?
Or do you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, you're doing an excellent thing with the historical, it would be, I think our citizens need to hear a little bit what's going on.
Absolutely, so, uh, so again, this is to, uh, by with the lighting, uh, and a lighting scope on the tank. So we're currently, as you all probably are aware, if you look over on Second Street, there are now wrappers that are welded to the top of the tank, they're about to throw the shroud onto the historic tank, so it's gonna be covered for a little bit. Uh, have a shroud because that tank a- actually has lead paint on it.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, it hasn't been in service since, uh, the south standpipe was put online. Uh, however, during the, you know, during this, uh, project, you know, we're kinda thinking, oh, how do we make this kind of more of a touristy, touristy environment, it kinda, I've been, I'm not the tourist expert here. Uh, however, uh, lighting is a very, you know, very well-done item, so that way it can bring residents to the actual ele- to the area, to the downtown area, kinda really bring a really high focus to the downtown area. And so thi- this scope is actually to look at a couple of different lighting options. Uh, we're gonna need to have some electrical changes and also some structure, some structure being added for the lighting system. And so this will evaluate those options, be able to bring those kind of designs forward to council, uh, to be able to evaluate a couple of different options, whether we're lighting just the top of the tank, uh, the bowl, uh, piece of the tank.
No, no, you got, you called it a witch hat.
It's the witch's hat is actually what it's called. It's an old town tank, so the common term for a tank that's a bolted galvanized tank is a witch's hat. That is the common terminology, I did not make that term up. Um, so the witch's hat piece of it, whether you, we, you would prefer to light just the witch's hat, the bowl, or if you would wanna do the, the top and the actual legs themselves. So we wanted to be able to design that lighting plan, take it out to bid with both different options and then we'll bring those forward to y'all as well.
And just for the record, I was twelve years old when this tank was going up.
We have the nameplate.
I, I saw it going up.
A- a- and, and the mayor just brought up a good idea that maybe we can be like the University of Texas, whenever, whenever our hi- our teams, high school teams wins, we can light it up, that school's colors.
That is the intent with the lighting system, so I will, uh, let everyone know that the lighting, uh, options for these tanks are incredibly expensive, depending on how elaborate y'all would like them to go. Uh, they make LEDs in a very elaborate fashion, so sure, there's a multitude of options for lighting that we can scope out for this. So we're happy to discuss it with y'all at length whenever we actually can get it.
I saw some, uh, LED lights, they have like the RGB in each light. Uh, there's three little elements at Costco for like twenty bucks, man.
So.
We wish.
Yep. So, we're looking, it's, it's a pretty expensive to, to do the light, a name elaborate lighting system, it'll be a little bit more than twenty dollars, but, uh, it'll be pretty expensive, but the, the intent of this though is to be able to get this moving forward, so that way at the end of the actual re- rehabilitation of the coating system, we can take this out for bid to be able to bring a lighting system forward to y'all for, for award, uh, or evaluation as well.
Well, I, I think that, you know, in the conversation about, we're talking about quality of life improvements amenities, things that, you know, citizens wanna see about our community and for, I thought this was a great thing to highlight, I think it's a great use repurpose. Um, I think our city manager's the one who came up with the idea in the first place with that as well, so honestly, I just wanted to highlight it to our citizens to see about that. Some things we're doing, mayor, entertain a motion?
Yes.
Motion prove, item four L is presented.
Second.
Mine broke.
You're out of commission.
Just press on Caesar's twice.
Turn his mic off.
Yeah.
Turn his mic off.
Thank you.
Cause I have to wait. A motion carried, thank you. A motion carried. Thank you.
Next item is four M approving a professional services supplemental agreement with liquidity in the amount of one million sixty-two thousand forty-three dollars. Professional engineering services associated with the reclaimed water line to eighteen forty-nine park project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Another item that we've talked about for quite some time. Would you like a presentation on it or?
Yes, just something quickly. You said quite some times, which tells me.
We've brought it up a few times.
Yeah, but I think the question is, is that whether or not our citizens should be hearing about reclaimed water, especially that's something of interest.
I know we've talked about the reclaimed water master plan. We talked about all the various zones. Mr. Rogers, I remember you being very explicit about the, the zones that you would like to see implemented. It seems like this is the, the step towards fulfilling the, the reclaimed water master plan and, and fulfilling one of those zones.
One of the zones, right?
Correct. So, so if you, if you can recall from our conversation about the reclaimed water master plan, there's a very rush out the gate for us. So one of those water lines is this water line to the eighteen forty-nine park. We currently purchased water, treated potable water to irrigate that park from Manville Watersway Corporation. So we buy a treated water at their, at their rate for the water, for the irrigation for that park. It is already, it is already designed or built with purple pipe in it. So all the irrigation is already purple pipe. It's already plumbed, ready to go for irrigation for reclaimed water, which is treated wastewater effluent. So the, the intent here is to be able to design that pipeline to get it out the gate. So that way we can get it to eighteen forty-nine park. Especially as we're looking at phase two of that expansion of that park. That's going to have more fields, more irrigation. That way we can really cut down the cost of what we're actually spending for treated water and irrigate.
And that's why I wanted this to be highlighted is that we're not only looking, one of the things that we're hearing about, we've got our rates and everything. It's like a water master plan is that it costs, costs, costs. You're just looking at raising the price and everything else. You're also looking at trying to cut and trying to make sure you make things that make fiscally sound decision on there. This is a perfect example of that given the park over there as well. And I'm kind of surprised in the first place we did the treated water from there. So it's great to have the purple pipe and be able to use reclaim as opposed to that.
It's a, it's a very, so it's a, yeah, there's a, a big window here for us. So we, it allows us to be the first customer, right? So it benefits us because we're now purchasing treated water. But then all those developments along that corridor at eighteen forty-nine park can now hook into this pipeline once it's constructed. So then that means that instead of getting our treated water for their irrigation, we then can give them reclaimed water for their irrigation. As they can tie into this line once it's constructed. That's why this one was really, we wanted to move it out of the gate. Because all those developments, if you've driven down, if you've driven down there or y'all, y'all see the development agreements that come in all along that corridor, all on the, the BACON camera corridor. That are coming in that are requesting our treated water, that if we can hook them into the reclaimed water system, it will save us a, a significant amount of water for their industrial developments. Whether for irrigation, for chiller water, all along that. But we, we just need to make the first step ourselves. Be able to get ourselves on to reclaim water for eighteen forty-nine park, which is a more economical decision for us in the city. As well as when they expand that, it will make even more financial sense for us long term.
How much is our water bill out there now?
So their usage on a given day, so in the summer.
And do you have an annualized?
Annualized is going to depend on the season. Obviously, we're looking at easily a hundred grand a year on average, just in water use. But it's going to depend on season, right? That if you average that over five years, you're at about a hundred grand a year. But this summer is going to be a little bit more cost than you're going to look at like a wet year. But if you average it over a five year period, you're looking about.
I'm just trying to understand. I mean, granted, this is a million dollars just for the engineering services, construction, right away acquisition. All that's going to be quite a bit more. It will be shared infrastructure in the future. Just trying to understand where some of that ROI is on, on us. And if it's a hundred thousand dollars a year, just this engineering, it's going to take ten years for us to.
Correct. And but we're also looking at the, again, we had, if we wait until we have an anchor customer, we will never have a reclaimed water line. So the, the benefit is similar to how some of our neighbors have done reclaimed water. We have to eventually, we have to start by being the anchor customer ourselves to be able to bring those other customers on board to produce our potable water demand.
Yeah, we're, we're priming the well.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Granted it. Motion approved.
Second.
Great job on the interviews this week on the subject of reclaimed water.
Thank you.
Was it this week or last week?
It was, we did it a few weeks ago, but it was, it was a good.
It just came out?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you all very much.
Next is item four P approving a professional services agreement with Rock Engineering and Testing Laboratory LLC in the amount of eighty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. Associated with the neighborhood street reconstruction package number two project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
So this is not for staff. This is for our attorney. I was looking at page two ninety-one, ten point six, the force major clause. And it, I, I know I brought it up years ago. I think I brought it up at the beginning of the pandemic and then as much since then. That clause doesn't include pandemic coverage on there. And I know that that's become a staple since the pandemic over there with that. So I just, and I noticed I looked at a couple of other contracts. The force major's did not include pandemic too as well. So I'm going to ask again to please, moving forward, include pandemic coverage because obviously that has happened. And just something that we can keep in the place right there as well as move forward.
We can, we'll include this in our standard agreement moving forward.
Motion approved. Four P is presented.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Next is item four Q approving a construction contract with patent construction in the amount of nine million eight hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars. Associated with the neighborhood street reconstruction package number two project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
I looked at it. I think that's me. I, I, I looked at it again. I got what I needed. Motion approve. Four Qs presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Motion carried.
Next is item four S approving amended litigation fees for city attorney.
So if I could, I didn't pull this up. If I could just start this off, I, I. I have to say that I was kind of shocked at how low these fees are. But I did notice that there was a, a notation specifically in there that these are less than the fees that they charge all of their other customers. In recognition of our longstanding relationship and the confidence that the city council and city management have shown in the, in the city attorney's firm. I think these increases are, are overdue and are quite modest.
Okay, now can we listen to the person who pulled it?
You're the person who pulled it, aren't you?
No, I'm not.
Oh, Doug pulled it. Doug, hold on.
No, I, I pulled it. So in the, I think in the summary in our packet, it, it didn't have the accurate current fees. And so I want to make sure we are all aware of the difference between what, what it is now and what it, what it's going to.
Looked like a twenty percent increase.
Yeah, it was a much smaller increase than what it showed in the summary.
Was I incorrect?
No, that, yeah, that was a copying issue. The working fees were copied instead of the litigation fees. It has since been corrected. So if you're looking at the current, if you click the link to look at the current summary, it's been corrected.
So the one Charlie said was a correct one, right?
Yes.
So, and I do wonder what Councilman Rogers said. That is a very fair fee.
Charlie, can you tell me, we've currently been being charged the, the existing fees, even though this has been six, seven years out of date?
Yes, sir. The, the, the most recent litigation that we assisted the city with was at the two hundred and forty-five dollars an hour for someone like Lowell Benton. Who actually charges us four hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour everywhere else. So, yes.
I'll just be quiet and say thank you. I was, I was quickly, quick, 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 I'll just quickly say yes.
We should agree before they raise the rate again.
Yeah.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Quickly.
Motion carried. Done.
Too late.
Do you see that unanimity? That's the confidence of the council.
Thank you very much.
Take that back to the other partners.
Uh, next item is for you approving a resolution to approve the Travis County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan update twenty twenty-three.
Are there specific questions about their plan?
I'm upset about it. Um, I, I feel like we bring, we bring this up every single time this plan is brought up. So what kind of feedback, and I mean, this goes before you. What kind of feedback can we give? I feel like we've given feedback before on the plan and sometimes it's fallen deaf ears. Sometimes we've gotten some feedback on it, but.
I'll let Jason Han address.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm open to any feedback because, and would it help if I just kind of gave you a real brief explanation of how this whole thing works? Okay, so basically the hazard mitigation program.
Sorry, who are you? Tell me who you are, please.
Oh, Jason Han. I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for the city of Flugerville. So the hazard mitigation program is administered by FEMA and, and, and inside Texas, the Texas Division of Emergency Management. And it's a program to help reduce risk, increase resilience, and then it allows us access to federal funding for mitigation actions, which is the most important thing for us. Um, and, and a good example of that is so last year, uh, we applied for grant funding for the Colorado River Pump Station Generator. The reason we want to participate in the plan is it's a requirement for the funding. And so we had to go make an amendment to the plan. And that allows us access to that funding. So for the next year, we want to make sure that anything that we might want anticipate funding for is included in the plan. And just for, as an example, that project is two point six million dollars. If it's approved with the federal cost share, that's two point four million that would be covered through federal funding. So it's very advantageous for us to not only participate in this, uh, because it helps us reduce that risk and be better prepared and resilient. But also to access funding for the projects that we want to, uh, include for the mitigation.
So essentially what you're telling me is that our, for our comp, being complicit with this plan, we do get something out of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Motion approve. Something ever happens.
Motion and a second.
We bring it up every year.
Thank you, sir.
It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood.
Is he here?
Yep.
He crashed.
Oh, sorry.
Or he's reading something else.
Yeah. I was reading the details other than that. Motion carried. Mitigation plan.
Thank you for voting.
Uh, next item is item four V approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the interlocal cooperation agreement for public health services between the city of Austin and the city of Flugerville.
Any specific questions?
I think David pulled this, but I had a couple of questions on it as well.
Door ahead.
I noticed that it called out specifically a Blackhawk, Blackhawk pool. I've heard concerns from another community in the ETJ about ADA access to a pool. And there's a broken chairlift, but the pool owner, property owner said they're not responsible for fixing that. They don't know who to talk with. Would, would this, moving forward, this allow us to access inspections, whatever, to, to all the pools in our ETJ?
So they, this particular amendment is, is generally just to address the Williamson County component.
Okay.
For that particular location at the main center. We do have a contract with APH to be able to do the health inspections for all pools in Travis County. So any location that has a, that go through the health permit, health inspection. That's currently covered by our current.
Can I back up just a moment, Jeremy? Cause I really, I think this is important. Why don't you go and explain why we're doing it? Because Williamson County has now no longer providing that service. If you want to talk about that.
Right. So the, this, this was an item that was identified as we're moving through, uh, there's a pool that was under construction. It's for a main and east center in Blackhawk that, that happens to be within Williamson County. You know, the county line dips down into there. Williamson County does not provide, they, they got the right word recused. They've pulled back their order that they had. That was providing health inspections. And so now it's not a requirement. That's, that's a thing that then falls on to those individual pool owners and operators to make sure that they have the right permits. We were looking for, how do we ensure that the pool meets the safety standards? Looked to our partner with Austin Public Health, had a conversation with them in, in order to be able to have that kind of service. We need to go through this amendment. So.
Is this your APH partner behind you?
Yes, Todd.
So is it, is it normal for a governing body just to give up responsibility of governance? I mean, that sounds like a broader issue. Maybe I shouldn't be asking that.
No, I'll, I'll be real frank. I was hoping that you would. Um, this is something that we now have to take on to serve our developer. And make sure that they, yes.
So how come we have to take that on to serve the developer?
Williamson County is refusing to perform public pools, public baby, they are no longer performing those inspections. Someone needs to do that for the public.
For the public or the entirety of the county?
For unencour, yes, if you're outside, yes, yes.
They fall back to the local jurisdictions to find a way to, to handle that, or then they also default to the state requirements.
And I understand our, our development requirements, even though this is in the ETJ, we require that the pool be inspected?
That's what I was gonna say. Isn't that what?
So, so we have a requirement and right now there is no ability to fulfill that requirement in Williamson County.
And so they would need to go and find an inspector to, to do this kind of thing to be able to be in conformance. And so we had a conversation with Austin Public Health.
So, so thank you for the, for the historical update on that. I don't know if there's anything else that we need to do in that regard. Uh, but I, I know we have some litigious folks in the past. No, but, but I am curious. So if there, so, so does health inspection requirements for pools, does, does that include an ADA accessibility component?
Hi there. My name's Todd. I'm from Austin Public Health. So, um, going forward to back with the answer to your question. I was here last on July twenty-fifth. Two days later, Jeremy calls me at the office and says, hey, we have this pool. It's not in your jurisdiction. Can you inspect it? Tell me more about what you're talking about. If, I think you've all seen the picture of where the pool is at. It's part of your, one of your subdivisions. It's part of exhibit B as far as this amended. So, so, you know, we can look into it. I did a quick research on it and then I know our assistant attorney, staff attorney, and then attorney Charlie Zek worked together to redo the agreement. We just established two days earlier and I had already pushed it on to council for approval. And so we couldn't make those changes. So it took this long to get it revised. So what you see before you is those are, are those revisions. To let you know where this is at, it's, if you decide to sign this agreement, it includes inspecting this pool. It's my understanding this pool has already been partially constructed, having the underground plumbing installed, pool formed and the concrete formed. Our immediate concern is making sure we get the, the plans for this pool. There may be some cutting. They might have to take some stuff out to make it in compliance with the current international swimming pool and spa code. So all those requirements you're talking about, anything that's in the international swimming pool and spa code would be required, just to simplify that, that ask. And I'm not the swimming pool code warrior. So.
Right. So, so I understand that that international, I do understand that international code requires a certain type of, of drain system that, that, that we recently corrected. Well, recently, years, four or five years ago corrected our Gillian pool.
Yes.
Uh, with, with the new drains. And, and so what I'm hearing is that you're unable at this point to answer my specific question in terms of if there's a non-functioning chairlift in a pool. Is that something that, that the pool maintaining entity would be required to fix?
So it, the way it would have to do, they'd have to, the pool would have to be, would have to, the plans would need to be submitted. It would not be permitted until it met those requirements.
This is an existing pool where the chairlift has ceased to function.
Do, do we inspect commercial pools on an annual basis?
Yes, absolutely.
And is a, is an ADA compliant chairlift a requirement of a commercial pool?
I'd have to check into that for you. I'm, I'm gonna start.
I think that's the answer we're looking for. And I think that's more of a, I think that's not germane to the conversation we're having here this evening.
It was mentioned in here. So I'm stretching the scope just a tiny little bit. See, and I had him here. Seeing I had him here.
Well, you know what? We do have him here and you know, part of the scope, part of the scope is exhibit A. And the the fees that we talked about last time.
This was addressed in the summary with the way.
That was specifically called out in the in if you read it.
Oh, oh, I know.
Needs to be determined and not affected in this one.
So we had a conversation, just like you said, back in July about the fees. And you were supposed to bring back to Austin City Council. What was the feedback you got from those fees? Are there any amendments, any concerns? I mean, I know we brought up the fact that. We have no qualms working with you, but we have concerns about what the fees were for those specific things.
Yeah. In between the two days that you passed something and he called me back, I didn't have much time to work on that. But. Um, in that time.
It's been what, three, four months?
It's it's been a few months, yeah. So we have looked at that. You know, we have a, I'm I'm not originally from Texas. I'm from Ohio, as you guys well know now. Go Bucks and um.
Put meat in your chili. It's okay.
It's right.
Oh, man.
It's it's and also chocolate and cinnamon and cardamom and everything. It's called Cincinnati Skyline Chili, right? That's uh, it's almost like Indian uh spices in our chili.
That's way off subject.
Anyway, um, we're working really hard to uh look at everything. We've had, we've just had our. Fifth person, fourth person leave our budget team. We've had a lot of turnover over there. We're just coming on as a stabilized our management team there. We've got Marcel just came on as our. Our uh assistant chief. I just came on as a manager. We got another manager. Just got our fiscal person. We've, we're all new, we're all getting there. So we're learning the city of Austin's systems pretty well. Uh, in the upper management. I came retired from Ohio. We came here, but we all are. Learning our roles and how the city establishes and looks at some of those cost methodologies. I couldn't provide you much information last time. But I did do some work. We did look at some of the other cities and compare some what our fees are. And they're very comparable as far as that goes, or significantly cheaper than some of the other jurisdictions. It just kinda depends on how you slice.
Texas?
I'm sorry.
In central Texas? Cause if I recall correctly, some of the people that we had been speaking to, it wasn't just. Central Texas, it was where they had done their work in other places.
Yeah, we looked at Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio and Houston for comparisons.
We didn't look at Round Rock or Georgetown?
We did not look at Round Rock or anything, but I'm not gonna say speak to to the the newer jurisdictions that are really working to get up and going. As far as that goes, they really need encouragement and help.
Yeah, cause that's.
The um, what I wanted to say uh re- in regard to that is we're gonna be entering our budget season in January. So we did this our first time last. We did all our forecasting and everything last year. This was, this work was all done prior to all that. So this will be our first time really going through that. We're gonna look at some of these line items. Uh, look at the way they're calculated and some of those things. And we're working with our budget team to uh look at some of those. So. Having your support, um, if uh we do need to do some fee reductions is something that we could.
In fact, I was gonna mention, we've got some uh branded water bottles, coffee mugs, all under fifty dollars that we'd be happy to put on your desk as a reminder. Uh, to 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 keep this subject topic.
So yeah, quick question. So the last time you were here, we were pushed to make a decision really quickly because. Our decision had to be made before, one month before it got on the agenda for Austin City Council, or six weeks, that's right. So we were pushed to make that. Uh, decision very quickly and we couldn't hold it off. Uh, what was the outcome of Austin City Council's?
So that was admit, that was adopted. Uh, so the the agreement that we all, you guys agreed to that, that went through. Uh, along with the other.
We didn't agree. We, you know. I wouldn't say we agreed. We were strong armed on it, but yeah, so.
No, he's not. It's not.
So, yeah.
So tho- those those all went through and um, like I said, the only reason I'm here was called here tonight.
Yeah.
Jeremy called me a couple of days after I was here last time and asked for.
Oh, yeah, but we're we're just happy that exhibit A happens to be here so we can have that discussion. So consequently, from what I'm hearing you say is that you're having this discussion in January, you're gonna look at these things. And so what I would hope is that you come back in March or so and see, tell us what's. What are the results of those conversations? See what we can about that. Cause the same concerns are gonna be brought up again in time for, you know.
And if you're presenting to your council, I'm sure one or five of us would be happy to sit behind you as you're presenting to your council and just wave. Or hold up coffee mugs or whatever. Drink from our water bottles.
Three in the morning.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we're working hard and understand uh what you're asking as far as that goes. And um, like I said, we'll we'll run with the numbers. Make sure we have solid numbers to run on. Uh, and go from there, but.
We appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight.
I'll move approval of item four V.
Second with the chair.
We we never got to um.
Oh, Mr. Rogers.
David, David pulled it as well.
Rudy asked all my questions. Have a motion and second. Good job, Rudy. Thank you, Rudy. I appreciate that.
I just work here.
Technically, you volunteer here.
That's true.
Y'all made Matt wait till the last.
I disappeared. What the heck? Mr. Rogers. I disappeared again. I I don't know what.
Flipping around over there.
Gosh, y'all remember that during the pandemic, every time. David would get on, try to go on the meetings. It'd be like two hours later. Yeah.
I can't get on.
And he has fiber.
Okay, motion carried.
Doug, I think you and I had an interest in pulling four W.
I I think we did.
Is this four W? Yes, sir.
W.
Four Dubs.
W.
Four Dubs.
Four W approving a resolution approving the amendment to the amended and restated comprehensive development agreement for Lakeside Municipal Utility District number five and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
So it's an amendment to the amendment?
Amen.
Would you like a presentation on it?
Please.
So this is a, this is a request that comes from the developer as they're they're looking at the um. Lakeside District. This is, this is for the district that's located just generally to the east. Catch up. East side of um Hotty Lane. Uh, and on just to the north of of Seal Road. Um, all of the area that's outlined in the color represents the the mud district number five that that's covered underneath this conference of development agreement. That's been amended several times. Last amendment was done in roughly twenty nineteen and and established the concept plan that you see there. Uh, the red items that are shown on the left-hand side of that picture along uh Hotty Lane, that that's. Specifically the the property that we're talking about that sparked this amendment uh request. Uh, it's approximately four point four acre piece of property. There's also land that's along Seal Road. That's just on the, along that bottom part of that picture in the colored red area. It's also zoned as this retail area. There's an additional piece that's over on the east side. On Melber Lane, that's also that red color that's retail. Uh, the two pieces that are specifically pro- um talked about in this amendment are related to. The hottie and and to Seal and specifically to the uh, the hottie piece. They're proposing to do a development that um. It it's a commercial type of development that will help to to provide goods and services over to that neighborhood and into that quadrant of part of the city limits. Or I mean, I'm sorry, that part of their development. This isn't outside of the our city limits. It's in the ETJ. It's governed under this development agreement. In that development agreement, it basically says that they will follow the UDC requirements for retail for those two different pieces. And so that means that they go back to our Unified Development Code, see what those different requirements are and and propose a development. When we were having those conversations, they found a few things that they wanted to do an amendment to, one of which. Um, which is really what stemmed kinda this request is to to make an adjustment on land use to be able to allow for um. Uh, a coffee shop essentially to have a drive-through restaurant or a drive-through. Um, component to it. Drive-through is not allowed inside of the retail zoning district inside the Unified Development Code. So to be able to bring that kinda thing in. But like I needed to come to council to have your all's um consideration on that particular item. In that conversation, we also talked about what is something that could potentially be a give on it. Um, gas station is something that's permitted inside of the retail zoning district. And so that was a conversation that we had and we said. Perhaps if you let go of a gas station, which can sometimes be a little bit more intrusive on a neighborhood. Um, and you look at this uh coffee shop as a, you know, having that drive-through component, maybe that would work. Um, so that's what's being proposed. In addition, they they brought forward or transparent about the different um adjustments that they would like to see to. To build their development, which is to create a modern style um type of approach on their buildings that has um. A s- a lower slope. We have a pitch requirement of four twelve for pitched roofs inside of our commercial developments. They proposed a two twelve slope. Um, they also. They've got that. They added a a synthetic turf opportunity inside of their development. That's to be able to create. Essentially permanent green grass within an area where it could be a play area um between some patio spaces. That's not something that's currently allowed in inside of our UDC. It was something that we've been looking at. Um, it's not allowed right now because there's a whole variety of things that could go there.
I'm glad you anticipated what I was gonna say. I was like, dude, we don't have that.
Yeah, so you know, you you could go from the the carpet that goes on to the the front deck. Or you could have these, you know, more commercial type of operations. And so without having those defined pieces, our Unified Development Code just doesn't allow it. Um, that would be something that we could look at in the future. This is one of those things that they're looking to include inside of this agreement. Um, driveway spacing um in in our conversations with them. These these parts of the development all front out onto county roads. Um, in the conversation, we're like, yes, but Unified Development Code says. Or you know, development agreement says follow Unified Development Code. Like, yes, it's Travis County Roads, we're in the ETJ. Um, this is one of those clarifying items that they would meet the Travis County requirements for driveway spacing. Uh, because they they are fronting out onto those county roads. So that's an additional add inside of this amendment. Happy to go over any of that or answer questions.
Uh, I I mean, when I looked at this, it it looked good. Uh, my main question uh surrounding it all, and thank you for the presentation. My my main concern is. Um, does planning still have review for um uh the coffee drive-through? Whatever the drive-through is gonna be there in terms of queuing to make sure that that that. Queuing that overflows into the street isn't going to be. An impediment to traffic.
Yes, and that, so we've had a pre-application conference already with them and that's where a lot of these things came up and we were having those conversations. That queuing is a is a piece that we've talked about. And they they will have to meet our queuing requirements. They'll want to probably extend them further just because of the way that coffee shops sometimes are popular and sometimes like to have a lot of vehicles there. So. Um, I think in their site layout, you've you've seen that, I believe it was attached as an exhibit. Um, it may also be actually.
It it might be. I didn't page to that exhibit. I was just reading the words.
I think actually I have their slideshow in here so I can show you a picture.
Not that I'm an expert on queuing, but.
I'm laughing. I think he's doing funny jokes today.
I'm uh really uncomfortable with the change in the driveway spacing because of the uh the speed along that road. Uh, having the driveway spacing so much closer than it would be under the city zoning. Uh, I'm concerned it's gonna create a traffic hazard out there.
I think it's also important, Mr. Rogers, to that point. Same reason why I why I pulled this item. Um, the uh the driveway spacing, eventually that will no longer be a county road. Uh, and I don't really want us to inherit. Uh, you know, something that's not up to our standards in the future. That that that's a big red flag for me right there. I I was also concerned, uh, and I didn't hear you discuss it in the propos- in in your presentation, but. Uh, there's also a reduction in parking requirements?
Yes.
Could you tell me more about that and?
Right. So our our parking requirement for restaurants is one per seventy-five. So one, one space per seventy-five square, square feet of of uh floor area that's in there. That also applies to not only the internal spaces, but if they have a patio or an outdoor gathering space like that, it applies to that as well. Um, so they they would be required to do that. They proposed to do a parking uh reduction to one per ninety. Um, when we've had some conversations about what it, what does that look like? I believe it was around twenty. Spaces or some, something like that, that was um where they were deviant, but then they also are proposing to probably have some additional parking spaces. On their site anyway, just to account for some additional overflows. Things that we go, um, when we have a center like this, we we look at um. Having conversation about what are the peak times on on land uses? So if it's a office or something like that, maybe. Closed at six o'clock where the other land use like a restaurant might peak. Um, and so we anticipate that that will be something that will happen in this area. Um, the ch- the change in the in that ratio reduces amount of parking actually. Um, may have a a benefit on retaining some of the outdoor spaces. Um, versus adding more of the parking spaces there. Uh, the reduction was not a a significant concern from staff's standpoint. Um, because we could, we will likely have the offsetting land uses there in the timeframes.
And and I think the note that I read here somewhere said something about uh anticipated uh pedestrian traffic from the the residential neighborhoods. And I know that's, that's uh, I think for downtown, when you look at the one per seventy-five for restaurants or whatnot. You you look at fifty percent of that in the downtown district just because of, again, people parking.
Yeah, downtown has a whole different.
Uh, and so one, from going from one to seventy-five to going to one to ninety didn't seem like a big concern at all to me.
Uh, I mean, that's a, is that twenty percent change?
Yeah, it it didn't seem.
I mean, twenty percent, it seems seems pretty substantial to me. Uh, now you also mentioned. Uh, that that square footage does include the outdoor patio areas and that that requirement remains.
Yeah, so that that one per seventy-five and and just to be honest, that I think is something that we wanna revisit again. We'd like to revisit the Unified Development Code just to make sure that we're we're in in tune with the things that we need to be in tune with. Um, if you have outdoor patio spaces and they're required to park that at that same amount as what an interior space is. The tendency may be that they wa- may want to reduce the amount of patio space because they may not be able to account for the additional parking. Um, so we don't wanna create a disadvantage. Um, and and again, that's something that we're just gonna have to look at. On a peak day where it's nice out and everybody's out on the patio and everybody's on the interior, then you're definitely gonna have that additional parking need. But on a day that it might be colder or hot, you know, and they're they're not utilizing that patio, then we might have an abundance. And again, I think that's where we would look at this as more of like that shared parking plan and and something that we would visit during that site planning.
Have having a business that has outdoor patio and indoor, uh, that's exactly what the pattern we see.
Yeah.
Um, and and we s- we see this cause we have live music. And so whenever the band comes and they wanna set up. They follow where the people are and the people are either gonna be outside if it's nice or they're gonna be inside if it's not. So. So uh that empirically holds up.
Yeah, I think uh, I think you've convinced me on the parking, but the driveway spacing, I just, I can't get past.
I'm still trying to go back to uh not unwind the stack all the way, but I'm looking at this map and I folded up here. I'm trying to see the queuing.
So the um, I'm not gonna be able to use that. On the right-hand side of the picture, you can see that one.
Coffee. I got it.
That one building, there's a a little drive-through area there and then the drive aisle wraps around and then continues to the west until it would connect to Spideel. So there's a fair amount of space that will be provided uh to do that queuing. And the vehicles are not specifically shown on that.
Do you know the vehicle count that does the queuing to the fire lane liner?
That I don't. Do you, you don't have a? If you'd like to talk.
Matt, you showed up. You you had to have a chance to speak, right?
I was gonna see if I could propose like a fast pass. Like profit opportunity for you guys. Instead of being a W, but.
Right.
This is Nriso. He's with Levy Dykner. He can speak to some of the. Um, in regards to the driveway spacing.
Matching shirts.
Yes, intentionally.
Yeah, just like you and Doug.
It's on point, just like our project. Um, in regards to the driveway spacing, that's not something that we're hung up on. I think the reason why that was designed was because you make that turn in off Hotty Lane. You kinda look down the the play area, kinda gives a sense of arrival, but in regards to. Uh, and it helps traffic flow, but in regards to the project, it's not something that I think is. You know, that can, is not necessary. But in regards to the parking, uh, another reason why. The parking ratio is such is because my understanding is you have to kinda designate your uses when you do this parking study. And we would like to have uh, you know, restaurant one in the um.
And we would like to have uh, you know, restaurant one in the um, left building, if you may, or the south building uh, has the big patio, like the two thousand foot patio. That's where we really want a restaurant tenant. And so we kind of remodeled that patio off of the Rio Grande patio at uh, in Hutto. And then the other side, the north building has, you know, either possibly two retail or a restaurant, the patio. So just kind of a um, we're we're saying, hey, worst case scenario, we have two restaurants. We might need a little bit extra parking. I mean, we still can talk to the queuing on the uh, on the coffee shop.
Right. With regards to the queuing, we usually design these to the Starbucks standard, which requires minimum eleven cars to be queued up. Uh, one of the requirements was making sure that that sort of ninety degrees, not quite ninety degrees um, turns wide enough for any trucks, any long beds, any sort of vehicles that would be popular in the area. And this allows to the, for the queuing to be outside of the fire lane entirely. So any queuing that would happen past that would allow any free free flow of.
So so uh, specifically from the fire lane on that curve right there that I'm looking at going into the little arrow right there, how many cars do you have queued up between there and the the drive through window, the pickup window?
I don't know exactly, but it's minimum eleven.
Eleven?
Yes.
Which exceeds what our our requirement is. I believe our requirement is seven.
I don't see eleven cars fitting there, but I'll take your word for it, I guess.
We can provide a graphic.
They have the uh, the Starbucks at uh, Pecan and Central Commerce routinely has more than eleven cars that are wrapped around it. And I think Dazzle generally has about that number. Yeah, they're out in the street.
We're not trying to make a left.
Yeah.
So I think that's another kind, might be another kind of plug for the parking ratio too, is if we do the, there's another gentleman that works with us that has been uh, helping out with the project management. He says he thinks this is fifteen, but you know, if we have a situation where we need more, you know, we might lose some parking to queuing, if you may. But he says he thinks it's fifteen.
Well, I I think I'm I'm with uh, Count the Mayor Protown Wise about the uh, the the parking. I think there's some flexibility about that. It seems uh, not like a deal killer, but I am very concerned about driveway spacing because um, you know, those uh, normal standards are in place for a reason because of the speed of vehicles in that area. And uh, I'm wondering if if we go to uh, the normal uh, recommendation, which was four hundred and fifty feet on Hotty Lane and three hundred and twenty five on Seal, how does that affect your uh, the viability of this project?
Um, I don't think it, it's still possible. And it won't even change anything. Just that the middle driveway would come out.
Right.
Here on Hotty Lane is the.
So you get that that one on the on the right hand side. What about your uh, uh, your Seal Road entrance? Is that the?
The driveway spacing is specifically to the hottie and Spidey project, I believe, is the way that the amendment is written.
It's not hottie and seal? Uh, I'm, am I misreading this?
So the driveways would be.
Spidey on this one. Oh, that's Spidey, I'm sorry. You're 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 correct. Thank you. Yeah. So the hottie lane would be the entrance that would be affected by that, is right?
And I can tell you in my experience, I mean, I've seen more speeding on hottie lane than I do on Spidey.
Yeah, yeah. So people are going really fast on hottie lane.
Yeah, but the.
We don't want an entrance every two hundred feet on hottie lane. We're better off having four hundred and twenty five feet between entrances on hottie line.
We're we're okay following UDC.
He he said that he's fine, fine with the.
Fine with the four twenty five on hottie line?
Unified development code requirements and strike that, the Travis County requirement.
What?
Yes, he's he's for.
Strike the Travis County requirement and just follow UDC.
All right. So then, I'm I'm okay with it. That uh, Mayor Protown Wise.
Then it, if we strike the 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 four hundred, whatever you say.
Strike the Travis County and follow UDC.
If we clarify that the driveway spacing is the city's driveway spacing and not the county's driveway spacing.
That's correct.
Motion, motion to approve with the clarification that we're maintaining the city's UDC for driveway spacing and not substituting Travis County's. Second.
Any other discussion?
And I did some counting with my mouse pointer. I did get eleven. I got I got a counter on the curve.
Uh, city engineers have solved this. Let's go.
All right.
Thank you.
Will we get out before ten?
Thank you, Mayor Council. No, we, well, I don't know. Well, it says, it says, oh, oh.
Five seconds.
Four, three.
Have we got anything else?
No.